All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's Wednesday, August 12th, 2020. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. It is being audio and video recorded. It's not being streamed live, other than on Zoom, of course. We are wearing our masks when we move out the room, but when we're seated and we're distant, as we are on the dais, we are not wearing them. There are no scheduled hearings. We do have some appointments. Public input can be provided, just as a reminder, using the following methods. I don't know why I say this every week, because it's not live, but Board of Selectmen at dytonmass.gov. You can call us, 774-872-0920, or you can participate via Zoom. And a recording of this meeting will be accessible on the Town of Dayton YouTube channel for later viewing. And with that, I ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman. Since our last meeting, I would like to mention the passing of two residents, Holly Smith and Sharon Carpenter. I would also like to mention the passing of Dr. Joseph C. Harrington and his sister, Grace Landry. Both of them are brother and sister to Mrs. Martina Grova, a longtime and well-known resident of Dayton. Dr. Harrington was the first principal of Dayton Rehoboth and was hired in early 1959 to assist with and develop the curriculum for Dayton Rehoboth and Berkeley students who would enter DR in September of 1960. He became administrator of secondary education and then served as superintendent for the School Union 37 and the DR Regional School District. He was the second superintendent for the regional district. I worked for Dr. Harrington from 1977 to 1988 in the superintendent's office at Dayton Rehoboth. Prior to his retirement in 1988, the towns voted to expand the district to a full K-12 system. And School Union 37 was then only including, only included Berkeley and Gosnell. Upon hearing of Dr. Harrington's passing, Charlie Harris, president of the class in 1961, said, "Now that he is gone, he will live on in us." Thank you, JCH. Our sincere condolences to the families of those we remember with a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have an update on Sean Armel's Eagle Scout project. So did you want to update us? All right. You have the floor. You can take that off.
You can take this one. So January 1st came up until the board has left mentioned Rose Naikin project about building a structure and on town property council. And today, an update is, under normal conditions, the project would have been completed, but due to COVID-19, it has been significantly pushed back. I have materials and everything already prepared. I'm standby, and all I have to do is just let them know that they're ready. I can have them shipped and start building. And my plan for that is to start digging walls and putting the cement in August 2020. Some ad will be set. And over the next course of the month, I was getting some kind of waiver day. And for my board, it's going to shift to other things in the agenda. But hopefully, by the end of September, the rest of the structure will be up. I've also made, with the combination of both Mr. Conferi and Moon Perler, I have the exact same plaque that is already there at Council. Has been, and the print is being made of it. So we made the same material, same size, shape, all wording. The exact same, already being printed, also made a brand new one. And the one that's currently up there will be donated to the town. The location for the pavilion has already been made with help of Mr. Conferi. And all the structure materials are already ordered. I'm just here to have your go-ahead and your okay with the planning of building the structure.
Do you have any questions?
So, Sean, this is your mid, I'll say, middle-of-the-project report to the board of selectmen.
Yes.
Because when you came in initially for approval, you outlined it, and so this is a progress report.
Yes, when I came, on January, you asked for a midway point. It took a little while to get here. This is right before I started going.
My only question is, how big are, how big are, how many people could fit in the pavilion? Are, is it the size of our gazebo out there, or?
It's going to be, what, like 14 by 16 feet?
14 by 10.
14 by 10 feet. I believe the stones that we have for this seating could probably fit at least four people, but under COVID-19, that's separated probably too. But that's planned for the structure. We have saves on property currently for where the posts are going to go. There's going to be six of them. You can sort of have a slanted roof, pitch roof, so that rain and snow won't hit this, and the plans will easily sign off.
Sounds good.
Yes, so are the Native Americans okay with you digging? Yeah, not really.
The only concern I was given was to hand dig, so that in case if there's any artifacts that we find in the dirt, it will have, you know, they should dump it, and we have to sift through the dirt just so we can find them. So, you know, we hang out with coal.
Did you want to speak to that little?
Well, actually, there is something I did want to say.
Sure, absolutely, you have the floor, sir. Can you just identify yourself, that's all?
Well, thing with you is, it's like...
Just, you have to, just your name, just for people.
Oh, I'm Chief Moon Perler of our council. There is one thing that's, there's been obstacles keep coming up. And I don't know if it came before the school, the town council and all this, Roger. And he has taken care of the tree up there, mowing and doing all that other stuff. And as far as it goes, right now, something happened a while ago. Him and his wife aren't even members of our council anymore. But he has done a lot up there, and he's, but as far as this project going on, this is a memorial. So there shouldn't be any problems or anything. And I told, told him to go right ahead and do whatever he wanted to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. And I don't have any questions. I guess I do actually have one, I'm sorry. Did you need anything from us? Obviously, of course, other than the go-ahead? Was there anything you needed from us in terms of support?
No, that's all I needed was just to go ahead, just to make sure that everything was all set and that there were any more problems, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Can the board just consider waiving the permit fee for this project?
Sure. What, what is the permit fee for this?
It'd be $75.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I need the motion that we waive the permit fee for Scout Armel's project.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. Anything under discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept Scout Armel's report as a midterm progress report and authorize him to continue the project through its completion as outlined.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion under this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. And as always, if you need anything from us in the course of doing your project, don't hesitate to reach out. You're welcome, and good work.
We'll see you when it's completed for the sign-off.
And thank you all, and thank you, sir.
Thanks for coming in, Chief.
Have a good evening, everyone. Madam Administrator, we're five minutes early. What is the rule on this? The town clerk is okay with it. Madam, are you okay with starting a little bit early?
I'll do whatever you want me to do.
Okay.
It's usually just public hearings that are specific to the town.
Okay, that is true. Okay, Madam Clerk, you're here to discuss voting information for the state primary, to give us information, and also some early voting information as well. So I'm going to yield the floor to you. And colleagues, if you have questions for the town clerk, you can feel free. Sure, you have the floor, Madam Clerk.
Well, I figured I'd kind of maybe just give everybody kind of an overview of what's going on, what to expect, and maybe a couple small obstacles that we're facing that maybe, you know, being here tonight, people, residents will be able to see it. So I'd kind of like to start off by, and I kind of brought an example, and this is actually my husband's. So, that's a blog to anybody who hasn't heard of it. So, everybody, I believe you've seen one of these. These came from the state. I'm thinking, well, no, everybody got one of these. And this was to designate little electorians who wanted to vote. One or the other, a vote. So we are getting many, many of these, which is great. It's great. But just, just to let people know, this does by no means mean that you still cannot go to the polls and vote. Okay, this is just for the people who want, feel comfortable, don't feel comfortable going to the polls and, you know, whatever reason. And so they didn't do the mailing.
Instead of going.
Instead of going to the polls. Go to the polls or in house voting that we're going to early vote and we'll touch on that a little bit. So the obstacle problem that we're having is when people are returning these, okay, a couple of things. No signature. If there's no signature, we cannot mail you a ballot. The other thing is, it states on here what your primary designation is, okay? So if you're a Democrat, this is not only for the primary, because the primary is voided from ballots. So if it designated as a green rainbow, you have to have a green rainbow ballot. You can't have Democrat, Republican, Republican. The only people that can designate that they want a certain ballot is the people that are in no party. What they call an envelope, what they did on this thing, they actually, it's sort of called an envelope, because it confuses a lot of people, they put no party. So when you have no party, you have to declare which ballot you want. So this is what we're getting. So just, some people checking all off, they want all four ballots. Some people checking off no ballot. So what we have to do, we're not mandated to do it, because we had another one meeting yesterday with the state elections. We're not mandated to reach out to these people, but we only, I mean, we probably got, just in Dayton, probably about 75 of these that we've reached out to people that were calling. So we're calling, we will call once, we don't return the call, we call a second time. We've been starting these phone calls back in July when we started receiving them. So if you don't return our call by the second time, we will mail it to you, and we make a copy. Now, we're not going to call you again and ask you to please send them back, you know what I mean? Maybe out of 75, we've got maybe 20 people call us back. And so, but we do have a copy, even though we mailed this back, we do keep a copy. So if they say, "Oh, I never got it," we always have the copy, you can go buy it. I'm just hoping that if you don't receive the ballot by the beginning of next week in the mail, you should reach out to us and say, to the post office, and say, "I never got my ballot." At that point, we can say, "Well, we mailed it back to you, we've been trying to reach you." That's all. We wanted to give you the opportunity to vote. So that's, pretty much the only obstacle is those two things, is that people are not signing them, no signature, we can't tell anyone, and you're not declaring, you're not declaring which ballot you want. Or if you're Democrat, we've had a lot where people are Democrat and they check off they want a Republican ballot. You can't do that either. In the primary, if you're a Democrat, you're going to get a Democratic ballot. If you're Republican, you're going to get a Republican ballot. You're going to get green rainbows too. Whoa, Democrat, Republican, green rainbow, they're there. So we do have, you know, some of all, you know, some of each of the two parties, but the bulk of course is the Democratic Republican. So that's the first thing. The other thing is, is that everybody should have gotten one of these. But there's always that possibility you got lost in the mail, or you didn't get it. So if you did want to vote by mail, and, you know, and you didn't get it, you can download the form, okay? You can find it on our website. Leanne put it up on the website for us. It's on the website, and you can also go to the Commonwealth Mass Election Division, and you can also download this. And it does the same thing as this. Well, you got your signature, and you designate which party and what election. Do you want all elections, do you just want the primary, do you just want November? We did get probably about 400 ballots, 400 of these, that all they want is the November election. And those we moved separately. So the November indictment was, state started setting up the ballots and the envelopes to cities and towns about two weeks ago. Well, there's about 20 towns that never got it. And all they voted was Dayton, Berkeley. So it was Dayton, Berkeley, it was about 20 of us. And they promised it would be in last Friday. So I came by Friday, said they would just leave them, and nothing. So Monday, I called the state, and they tracked it and said, "Promise you, you're going to get them on Monday." But there's not even as much time. They get the ballots out by next week. So we did get in the afternoon, did a little bit of FedEx. So yesterday and today, that's all we did. So we sent out 956 ballots yesterday and today. We're still getting them by Monday, but I think today, the post office got 100. So now, at least we've gotten the bulk of them out. We can continue to send them. So if you didn't receive the app, don't get nervous. You know, they did go, you know, yesterday, Tommy Ferry took over 40 totes for us to the post office. We took another three, four totes today. So we really do, we had a wait on these, and we just, we're just working on it nonstop. And that's why we're really, so in this meeting room, setting, you know, set up the app, and we do it all faster. So our answer is, if you don't receive one by Monday, let's say Monday, you should call us. And then we can look into whether or not it was mailed. Because this thing, this, as you can see, there's a scan here. So when this comes in the mail, we scan it, okay? Then we put that, on Wednesday, we mail a new ballot. We then process it, and then once it's stopped, and then I can show you how it's going to be mailed, it then comes back again, and then we scan it a second time. So we scanned it in, we scanned it that it was mailed, and then when they come back, there's going to be a label with another scan on it, your address label will have a scan on it, then we're going to scan it again. So you're not going to get two ballots. No one's going to get two ballots. You know, you're going to get one ballot, and that ballot's going to be scanned for a few times. So we did go into a situation. We had this couple that are not in town, and they voted absentee. They voted absentee, we mailed out their absentee ballot. They got this in the mail, they probably didn't realize, mailed this in also. Well, as soon as we went to put this in, scanned it, little red flag comes up and says, "No, no, no, they were already receiving absentee ballots." So you're not going to get a couple of them. So it's going well, and the process is going well. Will there be, you know, some little pickups, but not the major. Okay. This is what it looks like. So when you, when you get your ballot, it's going to be mailed from one of these, you're going to have a label. And then you're going to have this here, where your ballot goes in here. Very, very important, that's why we highlighted it. You have to sign this, okay? Because this is only going to be opened up on election day. It's going to be processed, bootishing, you have to open it on election day. And if there's no signature, or no, you don't fill in your name, I mean, you vote your name, put your name and your address, and there's no signature, we don't know what belongs to it. It's not going to count, you know? So it's very important. So the state said, maybe you highlight this. So it's not a doubt, it is. Highlight all these envelopes, and so people know they need to sign it. A little different this year. So people that get absentee ballots, same situation, but this year, you don't have to pay postage. The state spent $4 million on postage for all these returned ballots. So this is the envelope, you're going to put this in here, and you're going to put your address, and you're going to either mail it, don't need a stamp, bring it into the town hall, or put in the drop box. I had a couple questions, people concerned about the drop box. The drop box will be opened like every two hours, starting probably tomorrow, because the ballots, bulk of the ballots, like 500 ballots were out yesterday. So we will be opening that every few hours. I'm going to have to, because it's not the drop box. But, so, three ways. Drop box, if you're uncomfortable in the post office, drop it in the post office, but do not propose it. The postage is paid by the state. Okay? So that's that. And now that Tommy is here, I did, like I said, he, thank goodness he's been around the last couple days to take our whole ballots to the post office, because they are super happy. So he's our clerk, delivery boy, last couple of days. So really, really thankful for all that he did. Okay. In-house voting. So the state is being given that we do in-house voting for the primary this year. This is the first time we're doing in-house voting for the primary, for a state primary in September. We do need to open up our normal working hours, and we are mandated by the number, depending on the number of registered voters you have in town, a certain number of hours on Saturday and Sunday. We fall into the second category of between 5,000 and 8,000. So we need to, we're mandated to open for four hours on Saturday and Sunday for the state primary. Voting will be done in the lower level of the town hall. It will be August 22nd, 23rd, that's the Saturday and Sunday, from 7:00 in the morning till 11 o'clock in the morning. And then we will be open from the Monday through Thursday, the 24th through the 27th, on regular hours. For, and that's, that's voting early, you're voting early. You pretty much do the same thing. You get a ballot, you get a ballot, you go vote in the booth, you go in the booth, you're going to put the ballot in one of these envelopes, and we have two big boxes that you would drop them in, whether they're precinct one or precinct two. So that will happen for six straight days. This will also happen for the November election, October 17th through the 30th, for 14 straight days, including Saturday and Sunday. But we'll give it to them afterwards. So, I mean, if you are not a registered voter, the last day to register for the primary is August 22nd at 11 o'clock. If you registered to vote after that date, you won't be able to vote in the primary. You'll be able to vote in the state election in November, but not the primary. So that's pretty much kind of the wrap-up of what we're doing, what's happening. I feel comfortable, like I said, we mailed out about 957 ballots in two days. They're, everything went pretty well. I didn't get any complaints from the post office yet. I don't think they will. I think, you know, we're doing well. I'm hoping that the people that don't get a ballot that we're holding, those that we're holding, that they'll call us, and if not, then they'll have to go to the polls or in-house voting the last of the ballots. So that, that's pretty much it. I don't know if there's any questions, any concerns.
I had a comment. In today's debate, yes, and I'm at a post office today. There was a folder from a candidate that contained two requests, one addressed to me, one addressed to my husband, that we're supposed to fill out to request ballots, and it's addressed to, with postage paid, to the town clerk in Dayton. Now, we've already done our paperwork, but when I saw this, my thought was, I hope people that have already done what we've done, fill these things out and send them to you. I will, I will bring it by the office tomorrow.
It's even good, because the thing doing that, they're doing that on their own. Picture this, they didn't go up.
Exactly, and I'm sure it's being paid for by the candidate's campaign fund. And it even has a code number on it, on each one. But, so if you, if you think about this thing that's, you know, you open it like this, this is the side, you rip the cards apart, and if we hadn't already sent our paperwork into you, my husband and I were supposed to fill these out and get them to you, either mail them or drop them off, because they were addressed to the town clerk in Dayton. And all I could think of was, this could get confusing.
Well, the problem is, there's just going to be so much more we have, what we have.
You have to handle it.
We have to handle it, we have to check every single one. So right now, when I talked about that scan, and I talked about that scan, we have the scanner, and thankfully, they did this, because before, we'd have to type in the person's name and their address. But because the state put that scan on there, we have a scan, we hit that, and automatically, it brings the person up. So did you, did you notice that there's a scan on there? Probably not, probably no scan on it.
I'm not sure, but I noticed there was a number. My other thought was, suppose everyone that's running did this and sent these cards out. What a nightmare. I, I just felt that I wanted you to know about it.
I'd like to see it, if you could bring me to you.
And my, my other concern was that I think when it comes to voting and contacting voters, I think the town clerks and the city clerks are the best qualified people to be handling this. And for a candidate to do this, I just think it adds confusion. I don't, I really don't think it's, it's a, I don't think it's a service to the public, let me put it that way.
You know what, and I'm positive the state does not know about it, because I can tell you, I get like 15 emails a day from them. And I got one came through, the state, like, you know, be aware that this is happening, I'm sure. So what I'd like to do, if you could bring it to me, Nancy, I'll reach out to Michelle Sissneri, and she'll, you know, take a picture and send her an email on his cell phone.
And it had all the information on it, what, what party that we're registered under, and just...
I'd like to see if Selectmen Pacheco has a question. So you'll give her the thing, and she'll...
Absolutely, yes.
Do you have a question, sir?
My only comment is, is that some people seem to be opposed to mailing ballots, because the same thing as an absentee ballot, except you don't have to give a reason as to why you can't go to the polls.
And that, that is in here, and like I said, Leanne put this on, on the website for me also. Everyone says, you know, it's the same exact process. Only thing is, you need a reason, whether it be the hospital, we, you know, out of state, or, you know, to elderly. Versus with the early voting, you don't have to have a reason to vote early. Everybody can vote early.
I did, I did have one question. So I know, obviously, you can only vote one way, but then something triggered in my mind. Can you request a mailing ballot and decide not to do it and just vote?
Yes. So what happened is...
That also feels like a bit of a nightmare. Little bit of a nightmare, and some wasted postage for...
So when the mail, when the ballot got mailed out yesterday or today, we scanned it into the state computer. When we run a report, when we run a report, it'll have early voting ballots mailed, all the names. There's an EV next to that person's name. If it was an absentee ballot, there's AV next to that name. When they're returned, we go back in, we scan it, and it'll be an X.[1679.79] When we run, when we run the voter lists on, for the election, on the day before, if there's not an X in there, that means the ballot was never returned, and the person can't vote at the post. We've had situations where they did return it, and they forget. You know, we had this elderly couple once come in, and they're like, "Oh, we want to vote." Of course, as soon as they went to the checking lady, and she says, "Oh no, I'm sorry, you already voted by absentee." And then she realized, "Oh yes, we did." So automatically, there's a big X, I mean, a big X, next to the E V or A V. So, yeah, many people do not return them. Many people do not return. I worked, I, out of the 956 that went out the last two days, I don't think, I don't know, we will get like three quarters, four fifths of that. I don't think we'll get them all back. We really don't.
One other question. What is the cutoff point that up until you mail that ballot in?
They can request a ballot anytime.
You could say, you know what, I could call you and say, "So, I'm not returning it, I want to come in and vote." All right. But there is a point in time that, once I put it in the mail, I can't change that, correct? You're not allowed to change it once you've mailed it.
Oh, absolutely not, yes.
Yeah, so people need to know that, too.
And you, and what we do is, we take two or three runs to the post office that day, and the post office knows they have a number to come. So usually the last truck comes in on that Tuesday or whatever, 2:00 or 2:30. So we do a last run. Now, if a ballot comes in and it's timestamped before the deadline of, you know, the day of the election, that ballot needs to be counted. So, I mean, I usually don't, I don't want into that issue much. I get one or two indictments, which doesn't change the outcome of our accounts. But I bet you in big cities and stuff like that, it could make a difference, you know? So.
Well, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I was hoping I, I didn't get a call from you, so I think I signed mine.
You also mailed yesterday. Nancy, you also mailed yesterday, you didn't get a call today.
Why is mine today?
I'm better off. No, no, no. Put my screen.
She went reverse now.
Very ethnic, so.
Well, thank you so much, so.
You're welcome. My pleasure, my pleasure. So if we're all looking over the same post office, just disregard anything we say or anything we do. We don't need that.
If you did anything from us, you'll let us know, right?
Great, Tommy's doing great.
Thank you, yeah, Mr. Bird.
Todd, so Todd will already get ready, so yeah. So if it's all, it would be wonderful.
Well, thank you, Madam Bird, have a great night.
So one other question. Are you going to be able to meet all the deadlines? Do you have enough staff? Do you have enough time? If things continue?
What happened was, I think I told him, so I didn't get my ballots and my envelopes on Monday afternoon. I haven't, which I stated referring to. I got an email from the state, one of the head honchos there, on Tuesday at 7:30 in the morning, that they noticed that I had mailed out 32 ballots, which is my absentee ballot. I said, "Well, I could mail them out, but I didn't have the envelopes and the ballots." So I just, unfortunately, I only received these Monday afternoon, so what we did Tuesday, I mean, we worked right through lunch and everything. We did nine straight hours, and we got 500 out. So I wanted them to see that, yeah, we're doing, we're working on this, but, you know, I couldn't send them out if I didn't have the, the ballots and the envelopes. And then, yeah, I'm good. I think I'm very, very in good shape right now. Last couple of days is a little touch and over. Good, good, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Bird.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Administrator, there's nobody waiting on the, there's no queue? Like people waiting to get in? Because we have to let people in on Zoom?
Uh, yeah, I just noticed that, and she's, she's trying to...
Perfect.
Hi, Jenny, can you hear us? Can't, she can't, hold on, I can't get my volume. There we go. Yeah, I'm out.
Okay. So we have a... Have a good evening. We have a 6:30 PM, you're welcome, with our building commissioner regarding plans and pricing to build a ramp and space for cable here in Old Town Hall. So I assume you are here to either run plans by us or give us an update, so you have the floor, sir.
Thank you.
You are.
So, what I have for you today is two options for the ramp. We met earlier today, Selecton Pacheco and the ADA coordinator to discuss the two options. But I want from you, if we can run through it, is what do you think option works best? Because they're both entirely different, and one is going to require a variance from the state. So, option, I'll call it B, because A is my preference. Option B is right here. It's a 10-foot ramp. It encompasses removing the bench all the way to this location here. And the ramp would be on the floor, going up to the stage at its current location. The reason I don't like this is it takes away a lot of seating on the side hall and seating in the field area. So it'll lose about 25 seats to go with option B. This is a totally compliant ramp, doesn't need any variances. Okay? Option A is over here, which is my preference, and was also the preference of the meeting today with your coordinator, Selecton Pacheco. So, option A is a ramp that cuts into the stage area. And the only shortfall is that it is about six inches shorter than it needs to be, so it's slightly steeper. What was discussed today was we could make the ramp compliant and make it six inches longer, but landing would be six inches shorter. So both of those options would require a variance. The reason I like this is it's close to the door, which is where the handicap ramp is, the handicap seating, which when we get back to Oldham, will be right in this location. So it all flows. Both Selecton Pacheco and the ADA coordinator agree. Also, the bench you know we removed is actually not usable, so we wouldn't really lose any seating. So, with this option, we would have to go for variance. The ADA coordinator said he would prep the variance application, but it would require me to go up to Boston unless you're doing things remotely from Zoom. And that would delay the project, I would think, at least a couple of months, maybe more. We could function without it currently. We could put a temporary ramp until that time. I'm open for a discussion on options, but...
Sure.
This seems to be the one that would work the best. There are a couple of other requirements, though, in doing this. We would have to put a guard and rails on the side of the ramp. So, obviously, you know, I have a special place in my heart for this building. I don't want to just throw up a rail or a guard. I'd like to do something ornate, period correct, something that blends with the building.
For sure.
So I think that would have to be custom fabricated. It might be steel. We'd have to discuss the options, but... The rail would be, this one would be affixed to the wall. This one would be freestanding, it'd go all the way to the top of the ramp. And then the guard would be here to the desk, to the table, and then from the table to the wall. And more than likely, the 5 feet and a half would be that a gate is required on that side in case we have a stationary people. They can exit through the ramp and through the gate. Of course, all that is contingent on whether you like the setup. I rearranged things a little bit to help with the social distancing, so I don't know if this is the setup that's going to stay, but we really want to have that all lined out. No pun intended, before we put any type of railing in, because that, the railing would just go up to that desk, and those desks would be affixed to their location. It wouldn't move. It would stay there, so.
Do you like this, do you like the setup? I'm gonna ask you the same thing for...
Mr. Agia, one of the ADA coordinators, I almost say commission, but it's recommendations for us to variance, and he's in agreement, Jonathan Gale is in agreement, that we should ask for variance. And he prefers this area over here, because that's where the ramp is, to come into the building. The door's right there. Somebody has a walker or a wheelchair that has to come up here and find the, we call it, platform of the stage. It's easy for them to get onto it, as well as some seating over there that would be appropriate for them. I also agree with the railing over here as well as a gate or a door over here as well as over there. And I also feel that we should have that railing on both sides over there. It's gonna be short, like Mr. Agia said, six inches over here. Mr. Gale feels that that's gonna be okay. It's supposed to have five feet, it's gonna be four and a half feet to turn a wheelchair around or walk with a walker. But it seems like everything is gonna work out well with this recommendation. And Mr. Gale suspects and feels that the office of disabilities will go along, I think it's the office of disabilities that would, otherwise that would approve it, of the variance, would go along with the recommendation.
It's actually the architectural access board, just for clarification. That's the body that we have to go with.
Thank you. So, what we discussed was asking for two variances. One would be that have the ramp nine and a half feet, which would mean that up here will be five feet. What we defer is the ramp to be the 10 feet and four and a half feet up here. So we're gonna emphasize, Mr. Gale's gonna emphasize that we ask for the, this is our number one choice, and it's our number two choice. We're gonna get one of those, I believe.
Yeah.
So, I think it was well thought out by our commissioner as well as Mr. Gale, and I think it's gonna work out well for us.
Selecton, regarding the setup, because it sounds like this will be sort of permanent. Are you okay with the setup on the stage for us?
Yeah, I like the idea that these, what we have here is going to act as a rail. I would not want to see a rail the whole length of this, this platform. You know, I'm ready to make a motion that we go with, present Plan A, go for the variances. Because if it doesn't happen, we're stuck with B anyhow.
Correct. So... That's a totally compliant...
And since consensus is A is good, and the ADA coordinator is weighed in on this, I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Under discussion, you have mentioned a temporary ramp. Was that, when did you need? So I guess, did we need to be involved in the discussion of the temporary ramp?
So there are two things. Obviously, this spending, I won't know until we get the results back from the variances and which option we're going with. I think they're both fairly close in price because of, you know, we're gonna do a lot of this in the in-house, obviously. So, the rails is sort of, you know, I don't know. Custom rail's gonna get expensive, so...
But do we agree we want? I, I think we should go with custom, because this room is sort of...
It's gotta fit this room.
Period, I think you used is the right word.
It's gotta fit this room.
It should fit the room, I agree.
Right. So, so I guess I, I don't...
We don't want to see Spanish ruddies.
So to answer your question directly, I don't, we don't need to make a motion on any funding condition to leave the variance.
Sure.
If you want a temporary ramp in interim, it could take several months, then that's something that we'd have to discuss. And that ramp would have to be, probably we'll use steel. We do have access through the veteran services office to some temporary ramping, the rails come included. They're not 100% compliant, but it's a ramp. So if that's something you wanted to do in interim, that's fine, or you could just not have any public access to the, to the stage area until the ramp is installed, so.
Is this a decision we need to make, Madam Administrator? I'm not saying it's a difficult, I, is this something we need to? I know we have a current motion in a second, so I sort of probably shouldn't just ask this after. Do you want us to continue this, and then we can continue after?
I, I'm getting, I don't want to speak for anybody, but I'm getting a lot of support for what happened here. I think we can just go through this. I actually don't think it would take that long, but... I mean, that's my optimism.
Would be great.
I would much rather know, like, how much fair time people is before we invest time money after entering a temporary ramp. Because I think this is a great solution, and we don't have to put it in, you know, any time.
Sure. So we'll know at a later date how long it may take in terms of the process.
When we left today, Mr. Gale's waiting for an email from me based on the outcome tonight. If you vote affirmatively today, he's gonna stop paying for it, and then send that to me, and then we'll get it up to the architectural access board. So that could be up there as soon as next week.
I think, too, if, if it's determined that we need to have a interim solution based on need, then we can move ahead. But if there, we don't really determine there's a need to have an interim solution, then I think we're good to go with A, and we can always discuss something else later, but...
Sure.
Not only, as I said, not that if A doesn't fly, we got, we gotta do B anyhow. And then, if that's the case, because of the time involved, we might have to go with an interim ramp, but we're not there yet. I think, I feel pretty good that A is going to fly because of the proposal and, and everything we're trying to do to make it accessible, but to keep this historic building, historic.
Agreed. So it does, it does carry weight with the board, so, the state board.
Any further comments or questions under discussion? Nope. Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Thank you very much. And if you, you know if you need anything from us, don't hesitate to ask.
I believe the town administrator would have to submit that I can still have the access board, but I would certainly go there or be at the meeting to present it. All right. I think there was a second part of that, Neil, correct?
Cable at the town hall.
Yep.
You still have it.
Okay, thank you. So, Mike and I, Mike Darby and I, as you know, Mike takes a lot of what I can dream and creates it, have discussed the area for cable. We came up with a fairly nice solution, and I think would be fairly cost-conscious, especially today, by repurposing some old material that we have in different locations. And again, by doing that, we would keep with the nostalgic carriage of the room and the building. So, that said, I think that we can do that wall and that structure for probably around 600 bucks. That doesn't include any of the cable infrastructure, and I'm gonna get into that in a second. That's just the construction portion of it, so that you'll see a wall instead of looking at his nice legs when he wears shorts, so.
Will it be like a car?
I'm sorry?
Will it be like a car? It's not the way that you see it.
No, no, it's gonna, it's gonna be just high enough to cover the equipment, which is probably around 46 inches. And the facade, the front of it, will be reclaimed lumber, stuff that we got from different buildings around town. And the inside will allow them to run all of the electrical and cabling infrastructure that they need. And they won't have to take things apart And they won't have to take things apart if they wanna change things, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, so if the board's inclined, we could work that into the cycle. We have some other things going on right now, but I, I think we can do it for a fairly short cost.
Uh, if there are no further questions from my colleagues, just regarding the construction, did you wanna make a mention about the, um, wiring?
Sure, yes.
As well, or do you want us to do the construction part first?
No, that's fine, I can, just in case you wanna, um.
Sure.
Okay, so, we met with a representative from Gary Pink's office, Gary Pink, I'm not sure the name of his company, sorry, but.
Otters.
Otters, okay. Um, to discuss the needs here and tying this building into next door. Uh, it was a fruitful discussion. It was determined that going overhead would be much more cost-conscious than going underground. However, we would need to make sure that we have rights to space on, I believe it's two or three poles out on one thirty-eight. Now, I've not seen anything in writing, but I can tell you that being present in that meeting that day was around seventy-five hundred dollars to do that. That does not include the interconnections on that end or interconnections at this end. That's just running the fiber optic cable from Old Town Hall to Town Hall, above, uh, overhead on existing poles. That does, I did ask, it's all the weatherproof connections, uh, high wind connections, et cetera, et cetera. So it would be done correctly. Um, again, I haven't seen that in writing. So I think the missing link is getting something in writing from Mr. Pink's company, Otters, as to what, uh, see that pricing in, in black and white, and then also what the additional cost would be for actually connecting the fiber optics to our existing infrastructure here. In addition to that, uh, we talked about maybe relocating some of the cameras from next door over here. I was a little disturbed when I read an email because those cameras are not the same cameras of these, and they were bought about the same time. I don't know why we bought different brand cameras, but we did, so there might be some interfacing problems. Uh, but, do you know what? Please.
So the reason why we had to buy Sony cameras for this group is the long-term plan of this unit was to eventually move this out and use it as a road piece. But as the short-term plan was to use this for this room, this is a Sony, um, this is a Sony application, so we needed Sony cameras to be able to control off the unit.
Okay. So, based on the, thank you, based on the email, there may be an option to connect additional cameras to that console, but that's definitely a question that's above my pay grade, so it didn't seem very promising to put it that way. So, I think the unknown in this is what's the cable cost for all of the electronic infrastructure that are being? And I believe those funds have to come from the cable peg funds, which were by the town meeting. So we're at least a month or two away from that, correct? Okay.
But we do, yeah, we should, we actually had sort of an informal conversation about, we're getting towards that part of the special time meeting where we have to open the warrant and set our votes for the special town meeting. So this actually is a timely amount of a reactive discussion.
Okay, alright, so in the interim, if the selectmen were so inclined to allow me to work the, um, actual construction into the, into the mix, into the scheduling, we could get going on that over the next several weeks. Um, Mike is working outside on this building. He appropriated the funds for vinyl siding upgrades. He's doing caulking, vinyl siding repairs, so that's underway. So, uh, you know, after I discuss with Tom, maybe we can get him excited to work on that. In the meantime, we'll have the application, so people start snowballing. I also wanna start discussing next door, so I think I'll have to come before you, probably your next meeting with some more formal plans for next door.
Sure.
So we can start working on the Town Hall project.
And that's okay. I think we also are continuing our discussion of some library, was that scheduled for the twenty-sixth, is that?
I thought it was.
I thought it was too. Yeah, so that's perfect. We don't have to come for a separate meeting. You're welcome.
Okay, so I, you, that do.
Alright, um, so, uh, should we, uh, well, I will entertain a motion regarding the, uh, construction. I'm not sure we should do a price in that, right?
I was gonna say, um, did you vote on this grant, the grant?
Yes.
Not the cost, just to.
Just to go forward with the artwork.
The application can be started.
And then you were looking for a motion to go forward with this construction here, so yes, you would authorize that.
Just a point one, in that motion, we are going to look to take some materials that we have in different locations, some of it was salvaged from the bad guys in Hall. So I think because that's town property, you would wanna include that in the motion that would use that in the construction of the wall.
Thank you. The re, the repurposing?
Yes.
Okay, of the, of the old lumber and such? Okay, um, and when we do the, uh, authorization, I don't know what the right, the green light for the, pursuing the fiber optic and all that, is that a separate motion?
Um, that's separate, for sure, and then that's also, that's gonna incorporate with the special town meeting article, so you may wanna wait until we.
So we don't need to even?
I would say, I would, because you don't, you don't even have what the listing of equipment.
Yeah, and we don't have anything on paper.
So I would, I would wait.
Okay, is that okay?
Sure.
Alright.
Being, being able to broadcast live is a big thing, because that's what I've heard the most from people. And I say, oh, you can watch, I don't wanna go on a computer, I don't wanna watch it when it happens, but we're getting that.
See, if we, the other thing I was thinking of, so we could broadcast, I don't know if we're broadcasting tonight from the computer, but if we were, I suspect we would get the complaints, because it's from the computer, that they can't hear us. So, I think.
It's not ideal.
Yeah.
For example, we can't.
Well, this will mean that it's more likely that that article passes that town meeting, so we can have IP. And I will entertain motions, and you can ask.
And we still put this on a cable channel.
Oh, yes.
So it's not live, but Friday night or whatever, it goes on, as well as on YouTube.
Yeah.
And that was a big concern of mine, that the, that people be able to see this meeting live eventually. I understand it's gonna take a little bit of time, but that is the goal. So I'll make the motion, but I, I saw Mrs. Gulart writing some stuff down, so I'm not sure, were you writing on the motion?
Uh, no, I'm just writing notes to myself and things I have to do. Sorry.
I'll make a motion that we appropriate, uh, probably six hundred dollars as well as repurposing some of the wood that we have in town to construct a wall of cable.
A booth.
A booth. You don't have to get into the height, right like that.
We'll give you some creative freedom, Mr. Commissioner. Uh, we have a motion and a second, anything under discussion?
We'll give, we'll give Mike creative.
Yeah, well, absolutely. We thank, uh, Mr. Barby for all of his.
Just before we go down this one, I mentioned Mr. Agio, has always, you realize how old this fellow is, it's not gonna be a hundred fifty-one years old. Uh, but he's also trying to maintain the look of this building. Even the ramp over here, I think you said, you're gonna use seven, a yellow pine, which is, that's all the, just a match. And I'm sure it's got this stain, but it'll be, so I'm sure it's gonna come out looking very nice, so.
Thank you.
So we're making that.
Always. Uh, if we have no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. And again, um, I wanna thank the Highway Department and our Building Department as well, uh, for their work on this, so thank you very much. Uh, under, so we can move on to discretionary spending requests, just a moment. Do we wanna do these, uh, before we get into these as a board, um, should we do these as a block? By, by department, okay. Um, so we have, it looks like four requests, uh, four line item requests for the Board of Selectmen, our department. So, um, I don't know how we wanna do this. I have no objection. Um, I did get to see, I went into the room, um, the office, uh, recently, Madam Administrator, and I did take a peek, I probably shouldn't have, but at the policy and procedure manual, um, and I know, um, folks are working hard on that, so we thank our administrative team. Um, and I think it's, it's gonna, um, come out really nice, and I think it'll be, um, something, uh, nice to be able to give to, um, current and new employees as well. So that's my two cents on that. Um, I wanna throw it to my, uh, colleagues, so Selectman Pacheco, and we'll do this for every item. Selectman Pacheco, uh, and Selectman Gulart, uh, can weigh in. Sir, you have the floor, on, on any of these Board of Selectmen requested items. And I'm assuming folks at home are, are following along with us on this.
So I do have some concern about printing the policy and procedure manual. Maybe if you could explain a little, I'm okay with the stamp, I'm okay with the HVAC component. Correction tape, we're gonna discuss this later, and I really feel like that's discretionary, you know, but. Uh, so, uh, concerned a little, it's not a big expense with the policy, maybe you can explain to us why we should be printing this.
Before you answer, can I ask, can I ask a question to both of you, actually? So if we're about to have a discussion in a few moments about the discretionary spending freeze, do we need to do this right now? Because depending on what we decide then, do we need to go through that? Like if we decide tonight as a board to, since we know what our chapter seventy is, which was a big, I think, black box for us, um, and we have an idea that it's gonna be level funded, if we decide to lift the discretionary spending freeze, would we need to authorize?
Okay, my, my position was that not to lift discretionary spending, however, I think we better define it. I mean, for example, correctional tape, that's really not discretionary, that's something that's needed. Uh, I believe Mr. Ferry asked up the last time, some trim, uh, it's not wire, for the trimmers and stuff like that.
Oh, the twine.
Twine and gasoline and stuff like, that's something.
Weed whacker.
Right, that's something that's already been budgeted, it's a need, I mean, it's, you know, that works, we have to get done, so. When we get to that talk about discretionary, I think we just have to decide what the board considers discretionary, right? I still don't mind this coming before us, because we still have to watch, uh, the worries that are coming into town.
I just wanted to ask you both, because we have to put it on the agenda, we'd have to continue collecting and putting it on the agenda.
I would rather discuss the whole procedure, because quite frankly, I think it's a total waste of time to tie up department heads asking for permission to spend nine ninety-nine and fifteen dollars, and, and I look at the stuff of the Highway Department, pipes and concrete stuff and, and, and office supplies.
I definitely.
I think before we knew what we were getting to state aid, and right now it's level funded, thank goodness, I think we need to relax a little bit and maybe not completely do away with it, but say to departments. Now, this was criticized when it was done before, but a previous Board of Selectmen had instituted, anything over a thousand dollars had to come before the board, and that has since gone away. But financial times have changed, and rather than have departments come in and, and with these little lists every two weeks, and if they're waiting two weeks to get this stuff, like the twine, we, we, that's a total waste of time, it's a waste of administrative time and expense. So what I'm thinking of, we could institute a limit on discretionary spending, up to, pick a number, so that department heads would have the opportunity to get the kind of things, whether it's twine or whatever, so that they can continue to schedule work, continue operating. I can't do that, because I don't have twine, I can't do that, because I don't have a concrete blade, whatever that is. But it's, I think we need to relax a little, I'm not saying throw the whole thing out the window, because we also know what happened in two thousand nine, when everything was cool, and all of a sudden, out of the blue, it was, by the way, we're not giving you that money. So I don't wanna go too far that you can't pull back from, but I think we need to do something for department heads and give them some leeway, so.
Can I make a suggestion?
And I don't want to, every two weeks, I don't wanna see this. By the same token, if, for example, Board of Health needs trash bags, um, we all know they need, because we have to sell them. But it's fifteen thousand, so yes, just let the board know, we, we have to buy, so. But, um, as I said, in some of the, uh, when this was, when this spending control measure, I'll call it, was instituted, uh, before I was on the board in fifteen, um, it was a thousand dollars. You need permission over a thousand. To me, that's a place to start, whether we stay at that or go a little higher. I'm, I'm just throwing this out, because I think, I think we need to ease up a little and let department heads have some, uh, ability to spend up to a limit, everyone keeping in mind, the shoe may fall, folks, and everything's coming to a screech and halt. So that's what I'm looking at.
Before we, and thank you for that, uh, both of you, before I weigh in, uh, I will entertain a motion, if it's, if we agree, to move to eight A, which is a discussion of the discretionary spend increase, and then we can jump back to that specific list.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, uh, and that motion passes. Um, to, to Selectman Gulart's point, I see both sides on this, I mean, I think they both make sense. But we'll have, we have to move forward, so my, my proposal is probably sort of more along the lines of your Selectman Gulart, but if we're gonna have a, um, well, I see this as two issues, so, A, we should have some sort of a discussion on a limit, and B, we should also have a discussion on what it, what is this limit gonna pertain to? What type of a, of a expense? So let's have that discussion, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, I think we just, we, we need to understand what discretionary is. Something that's needed, that would, they would have bought last year or the year before, go right ahead and, and buy that. But if you don't like the chair that you're sitting in, you want a, a better padded chair, for example, that, that should come back before us, because that's not something that we really need. So, whiteout or whatever else, you know, office supplies.
So a supply to do, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just.
A supply to do your job, that you need to do the function of your.
Watch it, be careful, though, buying five years' worth of pens, just figure what you need for this year, the money has been budgeted. But it's the discretionary stuff, you know.
Selectman Gulart.
We've said we want discretionary freeze, but then now we're including everything. I didn't, when I supported, I, I didn't think it was gonna be stuff that normally.
I think, I think they may be feeling like they have.
Well, I understand why it's coming to us, I just don't think that we should, as Mrs. Gulart said, waste our time.
And this, making less.
Yes, true.
I wanna go to the town administrator, and then I want your thoughts specifically on how we're gonna define discretionary, Madam Administrator?
So just a couple of comments.
Sure.
My recommend, I came here with some recommendations, unless they mimic.
Let her rip.
Select, well, they mimic Selectman Gulart, find some sort of threshold and go from there.
Okay.
I just wanna defend this process a little bit. This is the first meeting, aside from the other meeting, it was last week, that we knew that we had level funded figures for locally, so. Now we know better a little bit, now the picture's a little bit clearer, so we can ease up a little bit.
Sure, I understand.
I'm sorry, I forgot what word exactly you used, Selectman Gulart, but it's a good one, let's relax a little bit about it. So I agree, I think having some sort of vague, like, what you need to do your job, I can fit anything in that.
Yeah, well, that's, this is the part, though, that we're just.
So we need to be very careful, we, um, so, town accountant and I have put together a requisition form that was previously discussed. We really honed it into, um, monitoring budget availability of funds, the town accountant had to sign off, we put a little check mark, I think it was your suggestions, like we learned about, is this a COVID-related or emergency purchase? We have that ready to go, I have a draft email with everybody in there, I just need to know what happens tonight, and I can let that rip and let it go. So my suggestion is, we have that requisition form, you set a threshold of some amount, or you can designate the town accountant and myself to be like, you know, that chair is not really something you need to do your job, the weed whacker, twine is, or whatever. And we can be a gatekeeper to funnel it before the meeting or not. Or if you wanna set a threshold amount, well, that's over five thousand dollars for your department, it needs to go to the Selectmen for you. So you can set and establish rules, I can administrate those rules, and then we can ease up on some of these things.
Okay, so you have addressed, um, this discretionary part with the requisition form, so I wanna hear from you. Thoughts on how we define discretionary, and it sounds like we may not have to, because we're gonna have a requisition form that may get passed through ayes, and then if they deem it's not, my understanding is, you can, don't need to wait for me, correct me when I'm wrong. Then you will add it to the list to come to, before us, thoughts?
I wanna eliminate the word discretionary, and I wanna institute the word necessary. I put myself in the position of a department head, whatever department it is. And I thought about this, when I was thinking about, we need to relax this far, give our department heads some leeway, now that we're feeling a little better about state aid. And my thought was that, as a department head, I have to plan, well, like Sue's talking about the big mailing she had to do, and, and Mr. Ferry talked about, uh, routine side, right, roadside maintenance, and if you don't do it, you get the phone calls, the brush, the weeds, whatever. And my thought was, as a department head, whatever department, I would in charge of. I would have a list of things figured, and I gotta have my, my workers do this, or my staff do this, what do I need to do this? And I would have all this played out, and I would say, oh, alright, my estimated cost for that is X. It, and then the next question is, is everything on the list necessary? The answer for the department head should be, absolutely, I need this, whether it's tape, whether it's twine, whether it's whatever. And I think if we determine a total amount, um, anything over this limit, alright? The TA should know about it, and it should come to the board. Now, and going through this whole list of things we have here, the only thing that stands out is fifteen thousand dollars. And we all know that's necessary, this is trash bags, but by the same token, I would not set a limit of fifteen thousand, it's gotta be lower than that.
Okay.
Because we have to be prepared to back off if things get bad, um, we are.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yeah, and we're just, we have two department heads sitting here, I'd like them to weigh in.
Sure, yeah, I just wanted to ask, so, is what, I feel like we're getting to the point where, where we agree, but I wanna know, are, is what, it sounds like you wanna see every requisition form, and it sounds like, and I could be wrong, what you're saying is, um, you would only, she, the town administrator account would only review ones that are above a certain threshold?
Whatever we set, so let's go back to my scenario, I'm a department head, and let's assume this board says, like the previous board did, any purchase over a thousand dollars we wanna know about, that means anything, uh, over a thousand, a form's made up and is given to the TA, okay? Now, if it's an emergency, my position is the TA has the right to approve that and tell us, I had to approve eleven hundred dollars because this department needed absolutely this particular thing. Now, by the same token, that thousand dollars could be made up of a bunch of little things. By the same token, if it's one item and it's already a thousand dollars, that's a flag, okay? Because when I look at this and see some of these smaller supplies, um, there's a bunch of them here that, in the Highway Department, if we take that big one out, um, that's well under a thousand dollars. So he could have purchased all of this stuff, and had only would have been talking about, if we had a thousand dollar, he'd only be talking about that, uh, rental of a vehicle. But, um, as I said, I want, I want controls, but I want controls relaxed. You know, the other thing is very frustrating, again, if I were department head, by law, when that town, that meeting votes my budget, I'm the only one that determines how it gets spent, and just like we ran into in two thousand nine, when funds had been expended, and the shoe fell, and we had to figure out how do we get eighty-three thousand dollars out of this budget? It's, we're in, you know, it's March. We met with the departments, we all agreed, here's the list that equals eighty-three thousand, and all of you see what you cannot spend. And they all agreed, but if they had said, this isn't our problem, we'd have had a problem. And we would have had to go to town meeting to get an additional appropriation to pay that off. They all agreed, but we still had to go to town meeting and say to the voters, we will cut eighty-three thousand dollars in state aid. We need you to vote to reduce all of these budgets in the current budget, so that we can balance the books. And that's what happened, okay? So that's why I'm, I'm looking to go forward a little bit, but if we have to pull back, we can, if that happens, so.
Uh, so I wanna ask you, um, and you can have the floor, you can, um, if you don't wanna answer my question, you don't have to. But it sounds like, um, do you wanna do a requisition form? Were you suggesting for, for every time someone bu, buys something?
I was, yes.
Okay.
Because I, I have the very similar sentiments as Selectman Gulart. I, I want people to be able to do their jobs, but at the same time, I'm waiting for the other shoe to fall, like, yeah, we got noticed that way, hopefully. But what happens after the second tax billing and our revenue is not so great, that people aren't paying, and I, and now we have cash flow down? So I'm, I'm just cautiously optimistic, I guess, and so I, I do want our position for every.
I'm just asking, because we need to, that we're gonna have to decide on that, and that's gonna be a part of it, and so I mean, as a tiebreaker.
And it's, it's dual purpose as well, because.
What you prefer.
So if you put in a requisition and you mark off that it's COVID-nineteen, that single signals to Chris and myself, okay, put it on this spreadsheet, that's gonna be a female request, so it's dual purpose. Even if it was like five dollars for masks, we wanna know about it.
You have the floor.
Yeah, I do wanna hear from the department heads, but I am leaning towards.
Yes, you're nice.
I am leaning towards the requisition form, we need another set of eyes looking at this stuff, I don't want, uh, Tom.
I don't want, uh, Tom, you know, if he has to buy sand or molasses or whatever you're doing at the time, I want him to run up and has to wait for us to make that decision. So I think I'm comfortable with the town administrator reviewing it. Obviously, if she's upset with something, she's gonna bring it to our attention. So I'm leaning towards that. I am sympathetic to what Mrs. Goulart was saying, especially she had experience with this 10 years ago. And we talked $83,000 10 years ago, it's more, it could be more than that.
Oh, yeah. And I think in your position, that you, when you worked for the state, all right? You had to manage your department. You had to manage money, a budget and whatever. And you can understand how frustrating it would be if, you know, I need a postage stamp for this letter or I need a book of stamps. It's like, this is holding things up, it's driving me nuts. So I'm trying to find a median place where there are controls, but we relax some of the, uh, take some of the pressure off department heads, let them manage their departments, but not go overboard.
Sure.
With the understanding, we may have to pull back everybody, but we're gonna keep you advised, you're gonna be in the loop, you're gonna know what's happening, uh, whether it's every month at a department head meeting or immediately if we get bad news from Boston or wherever.
Sure. Madam Administrator, I'm leaning towards, um, your recommendation, um, which is pretty much what Selecting Rule Art's saying, except for the, um, the requisition form. I guess my question, um, I guess my question would be, is that gonna be something where, um, you are making a judgment every time? I don't wanna, I don't wanna say like a judgment, but you are looking at that form?
Just reviewing, just reviewing.
Yeah, you are reviewing the form and you're saying, that probably is something that's necessary. And so I guess my other question for you is, if something comes in, um, and you review the requisition form and it's under whatever threshold we set, are you still gonna say no and put it on the agenda?
If it's under the threshold?
And you say it's not necessary?
I mean, it has to be something like, I want fireworks. I mean, it has to be something silly.
Okay.
She's gonna look, she's gonna review for appropriate.
Yes, that's a good word, appropriate.
She's gonna, she's gonna review for appropriateness. Um, if, um, if I, my department was the, um, library. And this came up at the department head meeting. There's a, there's a requisition to buy rat traps. I'd say, hold everything. Wait a minute, first of all, is the border health involved in this? Because if you need rat traps, border health needs to get involved in this, all right? So that would be a question of appropriate, what is this doing here? Because if there is that kind of a problem, first thing you do is get in touch with.
It's money, yeah.
Yeah, in that, in that case, it's not the money, it's, wait a minute, you gotta get the border health involved. So appropriate is not only dollar amount and isn't necessary, but if you see in one department something that turns up that you're thinking, what is that? That comes under appropriate.
So just to get it straight, the library is not asking for rats?
No, no.
I, I have this agreement.
So I do wanna hear from the department heads because definitely gonna impact that.
Well, I love to say actually, and I know that'll be in trouble, but, um, I actually agree with Selecting Rule Art, we didn't have this discussion. I think the townspeople voted the budget at a town meeting. They entrusted the department heads to spend the money that's within their line items and it's their money. So if they entrusted the department head as such, I see no reason why we should be handcuffed and spending it. I also understand that we need to be frugal because of the, of the current times we're in. If this department head who does spend foolishly, then I think it can be addressed, should be evaluation process. I don't know, there probably some out there, but I don't know of anyone who do that. I'll give you a case in point. The blue tape that you see on the floor. I went to Home Depot last night for my own, on my own time. I was gonna pick up a roll of blue tape because I knew I had to do this, okay? I have a credit card that you issued me, that you entrust me to spend with. I did not buy the tape because I do not have authorization. I called Tom today because Michael's on vacation, asked him if he had any blue tape. He chased out a blue tape. How much do you think that roll of tape cost today? It's, to me, it's just foolish. I could have take, bought the $4 tape, been here, didn't call Tom, Tom didn't run to get it from Michael's truck, which I don't have keys to. I know this tape been here and Michael would have had another roll of blue tape when he came back. So I just, I just think, I understand why, I respect your, your reasoning for it. I just think in some cases, it's a little ridiculous. And if we have a department head that is, is, is not, uh, spend worthy or cost conscious, address it with that department head, so.
Thank you. Just comment on that, sir. I'm in favor of the requisition form. We do probably have to eliminate something like this.
Well, this is, I think the threshold comes in.
Yes, I mean.
So my, my thought is, after listening to others, and I'm sorry, I don't wanna miss out the point.
Nope, Mr. Ferry is next.
But if you set a threshold on a total spending or cost of money, you have to fill the requisition form. Kaviya, if you're spending as one cent on COVID money, we get to know about it regardless because we're gonna have to handle it. So we would send out communication that would, I don't like to sell all those rules, but I think it's, what you're saying is, it needs sent, I'm not trying, I'm not advocating, I'm not trying to.
But it's a blanket policy that has effect.
That has to, and like, you have to.
Good and obviously not good, so.
The ability to pull back, but we have to, because we just don't know, it's uncertain. And so we cannot, I understand it's a meeting authorized it, I get it, I respect them, but I also want to harness as much as we can because I believe FY '22 is going to be tough. I believe that there's a few things we need to. So I'm trying to raise the free cash we have available and keep our cash flows there so we don't have to raid our stabilization funds and we can maintain our healthy financial situation.
I get, yeah, no, and I get that. I just also, we ask, um, our department heads to do a lot and so I just need to be, um, and we expect a lot, right? And they do perform and I just want to make sure that we're not doing anything that's prohibitive of them being able to do their jobs and continue to do a good job.
However, time hours or whatever time that costs us money in salary, uh, $2 maybe and roll.
And I was more than buying on my.
Yeah, so, so, you know, it makes.
Oh, then you gotta reimburse me for.
Right, which is the whole administrative nightmare, tax ID, all that good stuff. So I'm in favor of, I want the requisition form because it does serve dual purpose. But if you set a certain threshold on a total cost or item, per item cost, whatever it may be, and then we'll go from there. But if people have questions, they do call and reach out, so.
Just, I just wanna hear from you.
Just one comment on what, uh, Mr. Agia said. I wouldn't even wait for the evaluation. When appropriate and necessary, the minute a list comes in or a paper with one item that looks, what is that for? That department head gets called in immediately. What is this about, all right? It doesn't look appropriate or necessary, fill me in. Maybe when the explanation's made, it is. But by the same token, if it's that extra chair, because I don't like the chair I'm sitting in, wait a minute, not necessary, not appropriate. And you know what? You can institute on that department, a lower number. And that would come to the board.
Oh, sure, sure.
It's, it's a control button, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna, like I said, I just wanna make sure that for things like that, and, and that was important, that that be done because there was a meeting and people were coming and.
Right.
You know how it goes, um, so I appreciate that. I know it's probably not tough to criticize your bosses, but, no, I'm just kidding, I know, I'm just teasing it. Um, but I do appreciate it because we need that, um, we, that feedback. I'm not, I'm not in the field like watching everyone, stopping by and, um, looking to see how everyone's doing, so I rely on it, so I appreciate that. Uh, with that being said, sir, Mr. Ferry, did you want it? You don't, are by no means obligated. You have the floor.
Much to say. I, I am impressed, I would allow you guys communicate every time I come here. You don't see eye to eye yet and you still articulate well and it's good to see the conversations going back and forth. Um, my input to build off of Ken, um, each department's different. I mean, two of my tires are my trucks, one tire on one of my trucks is like foreign change. Police cruiser, not so much. So, uh, I think you hit it a little bit. Each department may need to be looked at differently. Um, and my, my last point would be the paragraph that we all have a copy of my request tonight. That last paragraph, maybe that can be looked at differently because we need to be a little bit fluid and, um, maybe that's a special circumstance. I mean, obviously, we're not gonna buy CD players and stuff like that, but vehicles need to be maintained and moving. We don't need to be going for a vehicle, making a list, parking it, waiting for a result.
But wouldn't that have been the critical expense that was allowed anyway?
But I need to clarify, I don't, I'm trying to be compliant. I, I feel my department's probably the worst department you can get your thumb on. Number one, the dollar value, I see it was gonna have to be higher than other departments because of my example I used. And then, um, that mechanics room hits, police firing highway, we don't wanna stop that.
So can you exempt, I think that those operations from the.
The highway was being setting a higher limit for, I'll call it the highway department, but it's certainly everything the highway department does, which is mechanics and all that other stuff. Um, that if we set a higher, necessary and appropriate limit for the highway department, because they have to service all other departments and they do other things related to other town operations, so that's one issue. By the same token, we probably should have another category, emergency. And that would be if the fire truck had, or the ambulance had a major, I don't know, problem, or a police cruiser, um, I don't know, had four flat tires or something. You gotta get the tires, you gotta do all of that. That would be an emergency category and obviously, that department head would come to the TA and say, hey, I've got to get this. So I think for day-to-day standard operating, appropriate and necessary expenditures, if we set a limit for town departments, with the exception of highway, and I'm certainly gonna ask Mr. Ferry, give us a number. Once you give the number, we're thinking about whatever we decide on for the others. And to follow up on what Mr. Agia said, that if in fact, a department, uh, does not control spending that is appropriate and necessary, that one department will be told pretty much, you're not gonna have that limit anymore. Yours is now going down to this. That way the other departments don't pay, unpenalized if somebody decides to do something that's questionable. Not that I think they will, but, um, I understand what Mr. Ferry's saying. The other thing too is, although police and fire are 24/7, he's really 24/7 too, even though the, it's not a 24-hour-a-day shift. What we know is 24/7, he's gotta be available. His department has gotta be for whatever it is, so, uh, you know, that's just something to consider.
And we would, if we did, we would still have that form, right?
I hope so. I really want the form. So I want the form to kick in when there's a threshold.
Because we need that protection.
Yeah.
Like if, if someone were not spending, we don't think that would happen.
So when there's a threshold, so you're gonna set a threshold limit? And I would just request that the police, fire and highway all have that same limit because they've got things like that too. Remember that one bell was like $1,200 or whatever that bell thing on the back was, whatever? So they all have the same limit and then administrative teams would have obviously reduced limit. Um, and then if your total expenditures are going to reach that limit, you fill out the requisition form, you mark off if anything is COVID-19 related, you submit it to the town accountant or to me, and then the town accountant and I will make sure and verify funds are available, verify that it's appropriate and necessary and then move on.
Okay, I'm gonna take one more step. I don't have a problem with the form because I want the TA to be able to review it for appropriate and necessary. However, I don't want a department head to sit down, fill out the form and wait. If we give you a spending limit, whatever it is.
They buy and fill out the form.
And you need it, go get it, but make sure you.
Yeah, you should say that.
Send the paperwork on so she can track it. Because she's gonna be the, she's gonna be our eyes.
We're on the same page on that, that's what you're saying.
Okay, but, but don't hold, don't hold up getting it.
But it does get held up when it's over the threshold.
Oh, well, everyone's gonna know that, you know?
Yeah.
Whatever you set your threshold at is really gonna dictate workability.
Okay, so I feel like we're coming to a consensus and, um, I'm not hearing any new information, so I think we're getting to the point where, where I will entertain a motion. But I do wanna ask, um, Mr. Commissioner, when you have to do, and I know you come in and you, um, you, you have an idea of how much things cost for certain projects, um, the funds for like a project, like what we're gonna do, um, for cable, that comes out of the public buildings account, right?
That would, yes.
Okay.
Which is your account.
Okay.
But, but I sign off on the bills as being accurate expenditures for the project that you approved. So, so the only, the only, um, I, I actually, I don't need to further complicate this. I think the only thing that I would, I would want to be able to do is the HVAC maintenance. We do filters every three months. Um, so I, I would, I would like, and I don't know, maybe.
Yeah, but that would be like your regular routine items that we're, we're never banned in the first place.
Okay, all right. So, so this was good because it's, it's shed light on a lot of things.
But I, we do need to know, like, for something like that, like, we need to know that.
Yeah, I'm hoping that that's appropriate and necessary. Uh, just one question for Mr. Ferry. From what we're describing, um, do you see any, um, hindrance in your operation? If we set a limit for highway, police, whatever, um, so that you can make a list, get the stuff you need, you're under the limit, you're gonna just order this stuff and have it come in, you're gonna give the paperwork to the town administrator? Does this flow better for you as a department head?
You see the paperwork, it's still easy to fill out if it's under the limit?
But not, but you.
Not before you get it, yeah.
For example.
You could have, your administrative assistant can, can fill that out.
For example, um, your list here is $2,157, all right? Let's assume we put up, and I'm not saying this for sure, but let's say we put a $3,000 ceiling on you. You could have ordered all this stuff and maybe gotten it in by now, but you're still gonna give the paper, a copy of this to the TA. She's just gonna scan it and, and look at that, if it's being necessary and appropriate, okay? That's all. The only thing that would hit, that would hit you that might slow you up or be a hindrance is, if we set a $3,000 limit and you've got something that's just over that, then you've gotta follow the process, okay? But hopefully, we're gonna come up with a number that will allow department heads to pretty much continue day-to-day operations, but will still allow us to have control until we know for sure what's gonna happen with the state.
So, so depending on the circumstances, I'm sure a phone call to either way to correct, get that bike moving or the vehicle's still moving and they're working to follow up, correct?
Yeah.
Right.
We're not gonna, I wouldn't, I'll speak for myself. I would, if there was anything I could do, we're not gonna have you, you know, or a car broken down or, that will not happen.
So that's, I'm hoping that you would exempt the vehicle maintenance services. Because I feel like Mr. Gacken is already sort of vetting what is necessary there, doing what he can and then he has to order the parts.
Okay.
So I would, does that work? Because I.
I, I think that's, that's probably more appropriate.
Yeah.
And obviously, if it's an older vehicle and you're questioning whether we should throw money at it, we're gonna have a conversation.
So I see three, so I think we're getting to the point where I'm gonna entertain motion. So we have an exemption for the vehicle maintenance, right? We have a threshold that we need to decide on and then we need to determine a different threshold for the highway department, so.
And also to discuss the requisition form. So, so is it my understanding then, that even if he has a threshold and Mr. Ferry's below that threshold, he's still gonna give the requisition form to you and all you, you're not doing it to approve, it disapprove, but if something hits you, why is he buying a new chair? If that's something that they would bring back to us.
So he's giving you tapes.
So I have even.
I was gonna mention a tape, because when I came and saw that tape, I said, who paid for that tape?
So, yes.
I have some of that tape at home, he could have called me.
To make it simple, like, just fill out the top part of the form, tell us if it's emergency or COVID or not and then staple.
Like a check the box?
Yeah, and they're literally checked.
Yeah, 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 no, I understand.
So you then staple your receipt of whatever it is so that you're not retyping or Heather's so that you're not re-taping or Heather's not re-taping, just to make it easy. If it's under the threshold, if it's over the threshold, much like our procurement form, that if you're over $5,000, you have to let us know. Same thing is applied. Okay, I need to buy, um, I don't know. I don't know, a street sweeper or whatever, that's very, very expensive. So that would come here, or if it's like, oh, I just need to buy, you know, this one thing happens to be over, I'll use yours, $3,000, $3,500. Yes, Tom, that's fine, go ahead. Maybe it's mulch and we move on.
Okay.
We've been operating on this way, I guess, all along, but it's nice to see it normalized.
Okay, so I want to be very orderly because that's how my brain works. Um, so four, are you satisfied with the sort of description overview of it?
Yes, if we don't have it in front of us, I'm sure we'll get a copy by some point, but I'm satisfied that, uh, it's on the mission.
Can you get your email from there?
What's that, please?
Can you get your email on that computer?
Uh, no, I can't. I can get from my home email.
Oh, then you don't have Wi-Fi?
I can send you a.
No, I have Wi-Fi for some reason, not a lot.
Oh, okay.
Doesn't come in this front book.
So I can do that, I'm sorry, regarding this requisition form, thoughts on it?
Oh, I don't have a problem with it. Because as I said, once we set a limit, the department head can spend up to that limit for, uh, appropriate and necessary. And maybe necessary is before appropriate. They can run their department day-to-day and do their thing. And they will give the town administrator the list. She's going to be our eyes to review that for really appropriateness, okay? The limit is going to be the message to the department head.
I'm, I'm okay.
If you're going to exceed this, you've got to get permission first, okay? So that's why I brought up when we had, as I said, before my time, there were limits in certain departments. So, um, uh, yeah, this is fine with me as far as the, the procedure we've discussed.
So can I start with you on my next question?
I'm sure.
I want to know thoughts on, so I'm not talking about the highway department, general threshold, blanket threshold, ideas? And actually, let's start with, did you have an idea? Because I'm going to do my recommendations.
Uh, the threshold for, so my threshold would be for fire, police and highway because I would treat them all kind of similarly.
Okay, let's do those, let's do those separately.
But I would say like, five hundred, $2,000, $2,500.
Okay, so.
I was thinking more around $1,500, day-to-day operations, which means pencils, paper, postage, but.
So you're talking about, what are we talking about, like a police, fire and highway?
No, 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 all other departments. Okay, by the same token, if a department says that number's not high enough, just let the town administrator know and the board can say, you know what? For this department, what we found is, let's, let's say it's $1,500.
Yep.
It's not high enough, so we're going to allow you to go to $2,000, okay? By the same token, if that department is not spending it $1,500, we don't have to change it, it's just flowing.
I, I think that's, I don't even know that it needs to be that high, but that's, that's, that's a good place to start.
Well, as I said, it could be cumulative, up to $1,500. Or one item that's just under $1,500.
So I want to go to my colleagues, Selcun Pachico, and I just wanted to add, I like that idea. And I think, um, for me in the future going forward, if I were to, uh, think about raising a spending limit for a certain department, I would want to see those requisition forms and see that these necessary and appropriate expenses are, uh, being tracked and they're real. Selcun Pachico?
Yes, so, uh, we're not talking about the highway, fire, police.
We'll do that next.
Yeah, we had talked about this at the department head. I think, you know, Mrs. Gold, I mentioned a figure of $500. I wanted it to go down to $250, I think we may have talked about $350. I'm in agreement with the $1,500. He actually said $2,000 or $1,500.
No, I.
Is that a point of the front?
I said, but I was talking about highway, so I missed.
Yeah, that's what I thought. We initially talked about that's for all other departments, I'm okay with the $1,500.
And if a department head says, let's, let's put you, both of you in department head seats. You know, we do this, you do this first month, you say $1,500, it's not high enough. You're going to come back to the town administrator and say, $1,500 is not enough for my department and here's the reason, okay? If $1,500 is more than enough for you, but maybe not for Ken's department, then he would speak up. But we don't have to do a blanket change if it's not necessary, but we need to start somewhere.
Sure.
So I'm, I'm willing to make a motion on that.
Yeah, I'm entertaining motions.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I note that we, uh, set a spending threshold of $1,500 for items needed for day-to-day operations of all departments excluding police, fire and highway, up to $1,500.
Do we have to include the requisition?
The form, I was just going to say in that piece.
And that they're appropriate and necessary expenditures?
Yeah, didn't I say?
I have, I think that's what you need. But it's, yeah, it's, okay. Needed for day-to-day operations, but we're still talking.
Okay, and that after the $1,500, Mrs. Brady, um, up to, uh, and we set it at $1,500 and that, uh, appropriate paperwork is filed with the town administrator to document the expenditure, okay? So they've got the freedom to spend it, but then they've got to just say, this is, it's like bringing in the slip, you know? Say, whatever, this is what I needed, what I, it will also help them if in the case of, it's not enough for my department, look at this. Okay, let's take a look at your department, so.
So before I second, are you okay with that, the wording of the motion?
Yes, oh yeah, and this is per order or per item or cumulative, right?
It could be.
One form with all the items and the receipts attached, five things, six things.
Or it might be one item, but if that one item goes over $1,500, don't order it until you bring it to the town administrator.
I will second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, anything further under discussion?
This is the threshold that it comes to you if it's $1,500.
If it's over.
Over that $1,500.
Okay, yes.
And a penny, not just a dollar.
A $1,500 and one cent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, gentlemen?
No, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. And now I want to have a brief discussion on a threshold for expenditures from, for police, fire and highway. Selcun, what do you want to start?
Mr. Berry, if we exclude the mechanical operation.
Yeah, we'll do that separately.
That's a separate one completely. Day-to-day operations for the kind of routine maintenance items that you have, barring big storms or other disasters, which would be obviously extraordinary, what do you think is a comfortable number for a, um, spending, uh, limit for just routine operations necessary and appropriate for your department?
That aren't vehicle repairs.
I have to put you on the side.
And chief town administrator threw out $2,500 as a frame of reference. So we need you to be honest.
Right, Mr. Berry.
Yeah, so $25,000 or $3,000 would definitely be.
I can live with three.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Mr. Berry, for example, assume that we set the limit, um, a threshold, not the limit, a threshold for your department, the police department and the fire department at $3,000 each. And we do that tonight. Well, a month goes by and you're up against that number. Obviously, before you hit that number, as you can see, you've got more expenses coming, you've got to go to the town administrator and say, I need to have my, my number up. Police and fire may be fine and we could leave them at three, but if, you know, other than extraordinary events, if you see that that three is not high enough, then you have an option. You can go to the town administrator and she'll bring it to the board. By the same token, if you're under three and it's comfortable, you don't have to do anything, okay?
That, that, that three should, three should work best, and like if I buy a couple trailer wheels and material and that, I shouldn't be staying under it, no problem.
Buy a lot of string for $3,000.
Um, Selcun Pachico?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I trust our department heads that they're going to make good judgment as far as expenses. But it's us that's going to have to go before the town, we have to ask for more money because we're running out of money. So we have to be conscious of this.
Absolutely.
We're going down the right road here and, uh, I know it sounds like we're nickeling down everybody, but we have to be conscious of expenses.
Safe and sorry.
Yes, so, and I'm in favor of the $3,000 that I suggested.
And, and just to add on to that, if in fact, all of a sudden, the other shoe dropped and what we had been told from Boston is not going to happen or whatever, before we would approach the town for any more money or hold a special to transfer money from reserves, we would be looking at that budget and saying, where can we say, I need X from your department and Y from yours, like we, like we did way back when? And say, everybody's got to give us something and let's see what we come up with.
We'd be breaking out that old 2009 memo to copy.
But, but I think, um, I think with what we're doing tonight, uh, I think it's, it's going to give our department heads, um,
To breathe a room.
Some freedom, but it's also, also making them understand, if we get bad news, you're going to get bad news and everyone has got to do what they can to help us get through this. It could be possible there would be a complete freeze and you're going to only pay salaries and utilities. I've seen that happen in a previous job. But we're not at that stage and as long as everybody keeps this in mind, we're going to make it. We're going to be okay.
Okay, thank you. So, um, if we're in agreement, I will entertain a motion regarding the threshold, spending threshold, expenditure threshold specifically for police, fire and highway?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we set the, uh, spending threshold for the police, highway and fire departments at $3,000, with the understanding that there will be a requisition given to the town administrator after the items have been ordered, provided those items are appropriate and necessary. And that any amount that exceeds $3,000, any amount must have prior approval. And that would go to the town administrator and the board of selectmen. So everyone has to speak their needs, basically.
I will second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion under this? I just wanted to thank everyone I know. Um, it was a lengthy conversation, but, um, there were a lot of things to consider, so.
Okay, um, just, uh, Mrs. uh, Mrs. Brady, when I said, uh, police, highway and fire, excluding, uh, the mechanics operation at the highway department?
Yep, thank you.
We're going to do that one separate?
Yeah, we have to do that next. So I just wanted to thank everyone for hanging in there while we worked it out.
Thank you too.
Thank you, Selcun, I appreciate that. After you just criticized me.
Because you're a critic.
You shouldn't. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. And lastly is, um, I will entertain a motion to exempt vehicle maintenance. And I think that's blanket for every department, right?
Well, you know. It's the mechanics operation in the highway department. Because.
For the town.
If they have to have contracted repairs, we've got to know about it. That's, that's not, we're only talking about the operation within the highway department for town vehicles. If there is something like a fire truck that has to go to.
Oh, and it's under like a war.
Something, yeah.
Yeah, it's still classified.
Yeah, something that we can't do. So it's only, it's only repairs and maintenance that can be done in the highway department mechanical garage. Mr. Berry, got any ballpark ideas in mind?
I thought we would just.
Are you really limited? We should just leave it?
I would just blanket exempt that.
If he has to park a car because he has to wait for us to say yes, go forward, then it.
I didn't mean to say.
It stalls, it stalls progress.
Mr. Berry?
But it's.
So the comments, so I'll send the vehicles out correct. I will stop in that.
Sure.
We will, we will have a, a conversation before a vehicle sent out with specialties exceeding that money. I would use the $3,000 for example. But they, yes, that, that should work to keep it fluid inside of the highway.
Leave it open?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Obviously with the understanding, if a motor gets blown, that's a big expense. She, and she should, the town administrator should be told, I can fix this in-house, but this is going to cost X, this is a biggie, alright? But that's kind of comments that still. Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that operation and maintenance of town vehicles within the highway department, mechanic department, not have a spending threshold at this time. And that any outside repairs will be, uh, that any outside repairs will require that the town administrator be, uh, notified prior to the vehicle leaving town. I think for the main part, if it's going to go out, it's got to go out. You don't have a choice, but she's still got to know because she's tracking it appropriate and necessary.
I'll second the motion.
Uh, we have a motion and a second, oh, um, any discussion under this?
So the rest, I want the town administrator to look at it just in case, make, make more sense to purchase a new vehicle rather than spend the money on an old 15-year-old vehicle.
We have a vehicle that we're probably going to have to start discussing soon.
On the opposite, we hear about it and say, can't we fix it? No, you can't fix it, this is against.
I don't think we can actually, but. Did you, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm okay with this one.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, did you have?
I'm sorry, I don't want to delay with this and this is probably not an appropriate motion to say this, but what's going on in my mind is that perhaps the $1,500 threshold is too low for, for you to hear it. And maybe there's a threshold for it to come for authorization to the town administrator and then a higher threshold for the board. Do you follow what I'm saying, for the board to hear it? Because I feel like, I'm just looking at what we have, there's only one request that falls under the $1,500. And so it's not, do it, is it maybe too?
You're trying to.
No, most of them are under.
Well, they should, I would promise under that.
Oh, I'm sorry, well, they did that, so I'm just thinking.
There's really only one thing, two, yeah, one thing.
Library, Board of Health and Board of Selectmen are all over, well, library.
No, they're all.
Board of Health and Board of Selectmen would be over the $1,500. So I'm just saying it's not, we don't, a lot of it.
I get it.
I don't, I don't, I thought that that was maybe the intent behind this originally. If it's not, that's, that's fine, I'm not going to.
So I just wanted to make a comment, so I get your point. But I think that the reason these are all on here together as a group that's over $1,500 is because we have to wait. I think if we were able to buy them, we wouldn't have. If we would, it never would have needed to come to us that everything, we created a bottleneck, that's what happened. And then, and now it's over $1,500, now we have to spend our time hearing it tonight and you as well, so.
And the only thing on this list I think we need to add on tonight is, what a help request to spend, uh, the $15,000 for trash bags. It's appropriate, it's necessary, it's needed, all of those words. And that can be a separate motion, but everything else that's on here, I think with what we've done tonight and with the town administrator looking at since it's the, what a selectman. I think she can look at our list and say, needed and appropriate, alright? But, um, yeah, so that's.
Well, you might have a comment about that, so let's vote on this and then you can come back. Because I know you haven't, I'm just bringing up the policy manual and I understand it, it doesn't need to be printed. So do you want to just briefly touch on that after this? We're coming back to that.
I stopped the motion before, so I want to.
So we're going to vote, did you, we have to come back to this anyway, so we'll just do it.
We're voting on the mechanics, uh, no, no, no limit.
Uh, all those in, if there's no further discussion on that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, abstentions, uh, the ayes have it, no names either, great.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the expenditure of $15,000 for trash bags as requested by the Board of Health.
You want to approve all of what they're asking for?
Well, they're going to have the limit, but this is so far above the limits we've set. The rest of them can fall in under that. So it's only the 15 that's a biggie.
I'll second the motion.
Uh, we have a motion and a second, um, anything under discussion on this? Trash bags are expensive, that's my input. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. Tom?
So just, just.
Just to bury your stuff.
Just to comment.
Go again.
Other than, um, if there were any items on this list that anybody wants to bring up to discuss, that's fine. Anything not brought up from this list specifically will fall within the spending limits, uh, cap or whatever you want to call it, that we've set tonight. So the departments can go out and get this material, so forth and so on.
The necessary and appropriate, me too.
Absolutely, absolutely, so, alright?
Selcun Pachico, I know, and I don't mean, I'm not singling you out, but your opinion matters to me. So I did want to circle back to this, the policy and procedure manual, $520 for printing. $520 for printing. Are you wanting to exclude that and approve the rest?
Even though, what is a whiteout correction tape? I've never used that.
Oh, I have.
So instead of.
You need that. No, okay. I was like, that's totally needed.
Instead of getting taken, you got to get 55 gallon drums with a bankroll.
So my concern is the top one. So is that something, I know it's coming from the Board of Selectmen.
Well, it's coming from me. That's what I think.
Yes. So if we had this policy that was just rolled around tonight before, this would not have come to us?
No.
Right.
You would have made that the secret.
And I, yes, and it's here before you began. It was here last meeting.
Yes.
And I felt, I wanted to be like a team player and say, yeah, we can skip that for now. And then I regretted it as soon as I said that because it's important. It's an important document. Even Selectmen, but like, I want a bound copy. Selectmen Bular said she wanted a bound copy. Like, why wouldn't the employees want a bound copy? Like, it just, so I put it on here again for discussion. It's an important thing that we worked very hard for for literally two and a half years. We finally have a culminating document. It's professional. It helps set the tone when people are brought on. I think it's very important. We could spend time and paper printing this. It's going to be a stapled document and I just.
Which is what I did.
Oh, you printed one?
I'll trade you. I'll trade you for a bound copy.
I thought when we voted on this.
You would be voting for 20 copies to print it.
But didn't we say there would be, there would be, it's going to be online?
Yes.
But then we did have a discussion about, I know we talked about hard copies.
Yep.
But then we also talked somewhere along the line about all current employees get a paper copy.
Yes, we did.
Doesn't have to be a fancy bound, anything. It can be a notebook or whatever you want. Big staple, whatever. But, you know, I think for the initial first time, you give them the bound copy or the stapled copy and they sign saying they got it. If somebody violates those policies, what do you mean you never got it?
Correct.
You may never have read it, but you got it. Just like we have to sign for other kinds of documents.
And that's a very important thing to have in place. I mean, just forget the pandemic for a second. That is a very important thing to have in any organization. And if it wasn't important, we wouldn't have spent so much time on it. By the policy review board, they're reading three times. We spent a lot of effort cultivating different policies that fit us perfectly, and I think this should be printed up and distributed in a professional way. It's not only, but it's $500. I mean, we can absorb that right now.
And I think what we agreed, and then I want to give my opinion on, so I thought what we agreed was, we'll do this, it wasn't, it wasn't a vote like that. We had discussed doing the initial printing and binding, this is a while back, and then giving it to the people that work here now, and then anyone that comes after once the copies run out, they just are directed to unfortunately, a digital copy. I mean.
But they will have to sign off on that also.
Absolutely.
You know, there are certain programs online that say, you have to check the box saying you read the rules, big contest or some other thing?
Check here. I read and certified.
And if you don't check that box, you can't move to the next one. So, you know, I just think that for the initial run, and we put it online, where I worked before, there were so many employees, you know, 25,000 or more, they didn't print it, but you did have to sign saying you looked at it. How many of those people read it? Probably not any, but you know what? There was a paper in your personal file that said you knew what the rules were, and if you violated, you can't say, I didn't know that. Well, you said you read it.
I wanted to just make a different point, and then if you'd like to have the floor, sir, you may have it. I am, I feel a little bit, I know maybe it's not falling under like appropriate, you might disagree that the, that the bound copy is appropriate and necessary. I just feel like we worked so hard on it, like this started, you remember, when she was hired, her first goal was to start the policy manual, and then it had been a goal pretty much every year up until right now, maybe even right now. I don't have your contract in front of me, I apologize, but, well, it's done now anyway, but it's meaningful, and it's a little bit symbolic, like we did something that had never been done. And you remember the 300-page policy manual that sat on the Selectmen's desk that wasn't even specific to that, and so we've really come a really long way, and I think for us to have that physical, put-together, professional, I think is the word we would use, copy, for me, and it might not be like rational, but for me, it means a lot, so.
Well, you know, not to offend anybody religious or other, it's the Bible, all right?
For the town, absolutely.
It's going to get the initial print and it will be distributed. Now, as time goes by, policies will be added, policies will be updated and amended or whatever else we get direction from higher authorities. Again, no religious preference. But, once the hot copy is out and distributed, then when the policy changes that come down, or new policies come out and they're all approved, everyone gets an email that says, go to the website, here is the new policy, you're expected to read it and understand it, and we'll have a sign off on that, so that again, no one can say, I don't know that, you know. It, I think, I think the amount of work that went into it and.
And it was our work. I want to be clear.
The contribution that so many people, yeah, even people not in this room, the people put so much into it. I think, I'll call it the first edition, and subsequent editions may be auto-electronic, but the, the copy in the Selectmen's office, the official copy will always have the printed update in it, so that anyone can look at it, and I'll come in and say, which can I find that? Okay, this is where you go to find it.
And I think we added like version, whatever, or.
Exactly.
To reflect that.
With like a date for, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were, we were putting a date on it, when we changed the policy, modified the policy. So, you have a question. So in the past, when we've approved a new policy, how would the employees know about that change in policy?
Email or through a department head meeting, and then the department heads would kind filter it down. To, with COVID-19, we passed a couple. I've taken to the town of Dayton users email and just blasted the whole town, so I can make sure everybody got it. And then for the ones.
Some of them have that form, too.
The sign up form, just about to say that.
Yeah.
They have to respond, like return that, and that goes under file.
Like the social media.
So is everybody then have the policies now?
Say that again?
So all the employees have already been given the different policies and they've signed off on it, so.
Why would we give them another one? Because they're all together. It's also, I feel very shocked that this is an important thing to have in the organization.
This is it, folks. As of this day, let's say it's today, August 12th, 2020, this is it. These are the rules, the policies, this is what you have to follow as an employee at the town of Dayton. We've given you a copy. We expect you to give us the sign off on it, and it's yours.
Okay.
If no, you can, you can have the floor and then.
No, we're standing in motion. We're spending a lot of time on this. I think everybody knows what my position is going to be on this, so we can just take this one away.
The jig is up, right?
The jig is up. I'm not going to get upset. Either way, I just feel strongly.
No, no, no. I, well, I wanted the discussion, which is why we let it, you know, it's good. So, but I will entertain motions.
So, a motion on what?
I say we just, my, I guess I'll give my opinion.
Okay, the 15.
For the entire, correct, for the, just the full amount.
It's over.
Because it's over 1,500.
And it's only because we bought everything to speed, otherwise we would not have been able to discuss it, so.
We're our own worst thing sometimes.
So we're the first five days. We're the first five days. Mr. Chairman, I approve the request from the Board of Selectmen in the amount of $1,550.45 for the items mentioned on this list, which include the policy manual, the stamp, the H-back component, and the whiteout tape.
I will step down and second that motion. Discussion?
You can discuss the.
We discussed it.
Hearing no further discussion.
We're.
Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I oppose.
Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. And just blanket statement to all our department heads, I just wanted to thank everyone for being patient. I know, as we all stated, you have a budget. I know it was hard to, or just burdensome in some way to keep track of everything and to be planning ahead constantly. It's very appreciated and we thank you. And thank you, gentlemen, as well.
Likewise.
So Madam Administrator, we have public input?
I'm checking.
No, it's okay. Mrs. Brady, did we receive any phone calls or emails regarding anything this evening? Facebook does not count.
No, we did not.
Perfect. Anything on Zoom, Madam Administrator?
There is no public input. She has mine under the agenda. I mean, she has a comment on the item on the agenda.
Oh, so she's going to wait till we get there. Okay.
Sorry, Dan.
No, it's okay. Selectmen Pacheco, do you mind reviewing and reading the scheduled announcements?
Sure. The town of Dayton's food bank distribution will be held next August 15th, which is this coming Saturday, located in the town hall level as a drive thru. This is at 8:00 a.m. And there's also some vacancies in different boards. We need at least two members for the ADA commission. We need two members for the viral review committee, as well as two members for the cable television committee. We need a cemetery commission member. We need a community preservation commission member. We actually need two ad larks members. We need a conservation commission member, ad hoc member. We need a diet of trails committee member. Finance committee needs three members. The historical commission needs one member. The industrial development financial financing authority, as well as the land use committee, and the open space committee need one member. Superintendent, we need a superintendent of pest control. We need a taxation aid committee member, and we need a tip review member, who we ask for two. And the ZVA, the Zone Guard Appeals needs one member. That's it for the announcements.
Mr. Chairman, just an update?
Sure.
We've been talking about the Pan Mass Challenge. I don't know the total that's been raised, and I don't really know what the cutoff is. In the past, it was one weekend. What I do know is that the response has been good. My team had set a goal of 10,000, and they were just a hair under it. So based on just my little team, I'm thinking we're going to hear some big numbers, not like in the past, but I think people, even in these difficult times, have stepped up for PMC Jimmy Fund. So when I get a final number, I'll let everybody know.
Thank you.
So thank you all for letting me mention that.
No, absolutely. Absolutely. Always talking about. Madam Administrator, I do just want to ask before we do your report, do we want to take the surplus, I didn't realize there was another item on here. Do we want to take the surplus item out of order?
It, I'm here all night, so if you want to address that.
I will allow my call. I will entertain a motion if we want to take that out of order. I apologize. I didn't realize that was also on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I approve that we take a general A to B, how do you want it?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Again, Madam Administrator, no disrespect. I apologize. Hearing, well, you don't get to discuss this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. I know there, Mr. Commissioner, I believe you had prepared or were preparing a list of different surplus items that we were going to auction. Did you, you have the floor, sir?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So yes, I prepared a list. I added to it, and it was sent to the Selectmen's office yesterday. I believe the only item that the Selectmen have not been motion on is the ladder truck. So other than that, unless I'm mistaken, everything else has already been auctioned on.
That's correct, and that's only because we literally registered the new ladder truck today.
Oh, oh, very good.
It is fresh. It's very fresh.
Very exciting.
So we've already added the house.
The house, and you've already talked about auctioning that, that the house is taken care of?
So it's.
As far as what is concerned.
And just one more point. Just recently, I was being aware, two generators in town became available. The sewer department declared one surplus. Wanted to bring it here for you tonight. It's not on the O M E station.
Sure.
I'm asking that you do not act on those right now.
Okay.
We like time to review the generators, to see if they can be purchased for a location. So I do not want to disclose those generators at this auction. You can do that only if you pay.
Thank you.
I just have one question. When the fire department gets its electric vehicle, is that black old Crown Vic that they've got, is that going to be declared surplus, or is that on this list already?
That is the only vehicle that I'm aware of that is not on the list.
Okay.
My plan was if the stars line up and the auction does not go off before that vehicle is available, we will do a last minute surplus declaration and add it. Otherwise, I'll have to wait to the next auction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I do have a comment that's sort of related, sort of unrelated, so I wanted to ask my colleagues if they have a question, comment, concern directly related to the ladder truck, which I guess is the only thing different on this list.
It served us well.
Yeah, it didn't, almost anything, that's for sure. I will entertain motions regarding the list, and then I'll make my, ask my question.
First motion, Mr. Chairman, I approve and declare surplus, a 198 Han LT 106 ladder truck.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. Was there, was there anything on the list we needed to act on?
Just that.
Just that. And then the other thing was to discuss whether or not the auction actually occurred.
That was my question. I didn't know if you had any tonight, because we need to add it to the agenda.
Right.
I think we need a motion to now give permission to conduct that auction.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the list of equipment and vehicles dated August 11th, 2020, as prepared by Mr. Agia, and also the auction of the property, a house only, not the, not the land. The house located at 949 Somerset Avenue, under the conditions that are stipulated in this notice dated July 27th, 2020.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and that motion passes. You had asked, sir, a question about when, Madam Administrator, when the auction should be conducted.
That's my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a collective question.
Okay.
So I'm thinking sometime in September, but I'm sort of waiting for this to be all set, ready to go, and then we can contact our company.
So I repeatedly emailed him today, anticipating that we would have affirmative action tonight. I have not read back from him, but now I'll let you know when we move forward, what he does. The three of us will communicate on Sunday, but I think September is a tangible timeline.
And did you say that would probably include the electric vehicle arriving, so we can declare the other one?
Well, once, once I find out, there is a certain amount of front time, we'll need time on the auction avenues to come down, take pictures and process, et cetera, et cetera. I'm hoping that the fire team can give me a more definitive date as to when this vehicle is delivered, then if we need to adjust the date a week or so to include that vehicle, then we'll do that.
Sure.
Are all the vehicles, equipment, everything on the list other than the house located at the transfer station?
Most is. There's just maybe a couple of vehicles that are still outstanding.
But it will, they'll all be there eventually.
I, I have, most of the titles get in my possession. There are a couple of titles that I don't, or ones that were recent, late rumors, but we've done well at keeping everything organized, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I wanted to ask my unrelated question now, but it is sort of related. So the, the white vehicle, I think two years ago, you told me that that car was like barely inoperable. I'm sure it's hit inoperable, probably a year ago. So I think we need to think about getting a placeholder article together, because I know our health agent also uses that, I believe.
That's right.
We can't, I don't think as a town, we can, you should be able, you should both, I know you share, be able to have an operable vehicle. I feel strongly that if that vehicle is not working, probably you'll have to use, or you do have to use your personal vehicle, and I don't think that that. And I don't think that that's fair, but certainly not. So, I think we need to think about it. And I know it's unrelated, and it's not an agenda item, but we need to have that discussion, what we're gonna do with that white vehicle.
At the fore. I think that's a good idea. I can tell you that when we have had meetings, board health-related meetings, when there were four or more of us, or even when we were going into the annual meeting and had to go to the train station, we borrowed the vehicle from the veterans' agent. But considering the amount of time that the shared building commissioner, health agent vehicle is used, they certainly need something that's reliable, and having that vehicle, I think, is really important. So, I agree with you that we need to look at this and start planning.
Yep. Yep, absolutely. Okay, and I apologize that was not on the agenda, but we'll have that discussion. It will be on the agenda.
Future agenda, I think.
Madam Administrator, all right, Town Administrator report. You have the floor.
Great. Okay, so just a couple of updates. They're good news. Green Communities, obviously, this has been a wave of love for a lot of different people. We finished the electric vehicle charging stations. We hit a bit of a low, but now that we're over kind of the crazy crisis that was COVID-19 a little bit, we, Jim and I and Karen have worked with Energy Source, who did our original audits, and they're auction running with the remaining three projects on that Green Communities designation grant. So, that would be installation of Wi-Fi thermostat, installation and weatherization of buildings. And I'm winding on the third, because I just did the rebate spending off for that before I had vacation.
You said heating and weatherization, and the light thermostat.
Oh, lights, LED lighting.
And the LED lights. I always forget that one, because you already did so much of that. It literally flips my mind every time.
For the people at home, this encompasses all town buildings, or most of them. So, it's a much bigger scale than what we did already. And I apologize. I didn't hear what you said, that's why I was trying to.
That's okay. I'm away from it. This is not ideal. So, we, I filed some utility rebate applications, so they're with the utility companies, and then when we hear back, they get going. But we've told them we want this done by September 30th, which gives us a little bit of pushing, because we really only have to be done by October. But we're trying to move that along, and it's been pretty great.
All we will be done?
Yeah.
That's crazy.
Well, that's what we talked about. We'd like.
The reason I say that is because, like, I know how long things take in government, and then some of these projects, and I mean, I don't mean this in like a pejorative way, but some of these projects involve the schools. And so, I literally, we had a conversation, I think I told you, I was like, yep, 2021, 2022, we'll check back in then. So, it's very good news to hear this. One question on the thermostats. Will they, they will be simpatico with the, you know, it's the same HVAC system, but new components and all that?
Yes. The only question I have, and I'll delve into it when the technicians come down, is whether or not I'll be able to do it in zoning. Because one of the problems next door is offices not moderating the same temperature. I don't know if the Wi-Fi thermostats will be able to eliminate that, but we're gonna have the discussion, so.
It can't hurt, I don't think. It won't make it any worse, that's for sure.
And so, once we complete these, then the pipeline for the Green Communities grants comes in. So, this is just that first round of designation. We have about $14,000 left over. We'll be able to use that if all goes well with these other few projects. Stay tuned on that. I'll have another update.
Go work everywhere, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to comment. Oh, you a little thing. Mr. Pacheco and I, as being former state employees, would take exception to that comment of how slow it went.
Sometimes not at all. Sometimes would.
We've been wounded, Mr. Pacheco.
Well, you happen to be exemplary employees. Not everyone is.
Well, that's a good segue, because this is something about the state moving very, very, very quickly. So, as part of some COVID-19 relief funding, the state rolled out through Master C, a shared streets and spaces program. I've spoken about this a couple of times at previous meetings. We provided two applications. The community is allowed to apply for three different projects up to an amount total culminating in $300. So, we received $168,242.30 to take care of project number two on our prioritization plan, which is one that we unfortunately had to leave off our complete streets request, because it was just too much money, and we could get out of things. So, this has to be completed by October 9th, and Mr. Ferry has already contracted with our procure guy company to do that. He's on our list. He's very excited, and this is another interception we've created. So, I just want to say thank you to the residents for all of their patience as we're completing under construction on just about every part of our town. We're adding another one. This is an exciting project. It connects a playground to another playground. It connects residents to local businesses, the public library, the fire station, in case anybody needs to go over there. So, it fits the goals of this program very well. It allows for pedestrian activity, increased pedestrian activity, safe pedestrian activity, connects a bus stop. And I apologize, I'll tell you where this was. So, it's Somerset Avenue at Pleasant Street and Main Street, that wonky kind of intersection. And to the residents that saw me taking pictures down there, we got it. I don't know where the camera is on this, but we got it. So, that will be started and finished by October 9th, and we're very, very excited about that. And that is my report.
I want to thank the town administrator and Debbie for their perseverance. I will make an announcement again. Mr. Ferry and I are trying to contact residents on Somerset Avenue. We have money. We need to pay you. Please respond to the messages I've left. I just want you to know, the project is going to proceed. If anyone has concerns about the project not going forward, you all agreed to the amount of money that the appraisals were for. And all we want to do is, we want to have you sign the agreement and accept the money, so that we can keep going. It will not hold up the actual construction of the project. That's just a matter of fact. But anyhow, I realize people may be on vacation, or hopefully got away for a few days. But again, I will, it'll be my third round of calling, but please respond, so that we can get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a question for either Mr. Ferry or Madam Administrator. So, Green Communities works where you got the initial designation, and then once you check those boxes, then you're eligible for these other project by project grants. How does shared street work? Does that work the same way where you get this, or is everything just project by project?
So, Shared Streets was specifically, a lot of the goals of the Shared Streets program were for restaurants to create like a little patio area. It was, they prioritized permanent installations of something, whatever your project was. And it was to help transform or open there more open spaces that could accommodate people with social distancing requirements. They also had like an ADA aspect to this, a pedestrian activity to commercial, that's where we fell in, pedestrian activity to commercial destination. And then like playground, promoting outdoor activity, and they want this done and completed. It's like a mini stimulus, right? They're trying to perpetuate the economy, construction of things, and we are, I think, one of the only Rissau County communities that receive this. The first round of funding, I was disappointed, but then I thought, you know what, maybe we can use this to our advantage, that we would be the first in Rissau County. And I haven't seen the rest of the award. I just know that we got this, so I don't know the other, the other group. But I mentioned that it was fast. You submitted it, the application, and within 14 days, you were told, oh, no, you got it. So, that is an excellent turnaround time for M C's. They were fantastic. They were fantastic to work with. We did submit another project. We got feedback on it. We just want to mention it's the sidewalk entering into Diah Middle School, which is a very, very worthy project. But because it wasn't enough new components, we, we have to rework our application if we, and I'm still working with Mr. Ferry on this. But if we do that, the town's gonna have to kick in the rest of the money, and we don't know if that's a possibility. So, on Monday, I have a meeting with Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Dale, to maybe take that project and put it as part of an M O D request for an ADA project grant that may or may not stay funded. So, I'm not abandoning that project, but we think we're gonna reassign it to a different grant that might have more success.
So, you just want these things covered as much as possible under grants, and so money doesn't, yeah, no, that makes sense. Did you want to comment on this?
I'm glad I really cared that the state worked so fast, because something that looks at state is very small size.
Same.
It's just like the way, there's senators, there's a lot of people that work on there. It is just, you know, look how long it takes. The policy maybe only took three years. And there's only three of us, four of us, five of us, so.
But it was a lot of policy students.
Yeah, well, there was a lot of work.
It was like standing for Jay Williams.
I do want to ask, so you had mentioned there was another project. So, do you have to complete this project before you can already be thinking of, okay?
No, I actually submitted both of these back to back. And then I got feedback on the first one, which is the sidewalk at D M S. And then this one, no feedback at all. They granted it to us, which is pretty amazing, pretty great. And then we could do one more, but you have to finish by October 9th, so you really have to make sure you have your ducks in a row. And we're working with that vendor, and he will keep us sidewalk friendly.
Yeah, well, I just, you, both of you are really killing it on the grant game, so. And I didn't mean that seriously. It's really appreciated. It's really nice to see. I get, people will tell me how nice it is to see all these grants that the town is getting. And I'm sure we got grants before, but I feel like it's almost like a waterfall now, where like one grant, you get the likelihood, and it works that way inside. So, I just really appreciate it.
The community compact admin is key to all of that, really. Because before that, we didn't even get a section look.
Right.
The other thing I want to mention about the sidewalk project, projects, meaning the three locations in town, these sidewalks will all be ADA compliant, which a lot of our sidewalks on, because they're old, but wherever the work is taking place, there will be that compliance, which is really good.
And I just, my last comment is, I just wanted to thank everyone for not forgetting about the Dyton Middle School sidewalk, because that was the first issue that prompted me to even think about that. Our infrastructure may not be compliant for our ADA residents, so, thank you.
I know why they're doing so well with grants. We're the only community that had cake.
We had a new syrup cake.
I do want to compliment the Town Administrator for all the grants that she's got for the town. I've been in town about 33 years, and so many times, people run for selection and say, I want to get this grant, I want to get that grant, and I never see the grants. Now that we have the Town Administrator, she's been excellent with grants and applying for them, and been so successful, so many of them. She's well worth the money to get the cake, right?
You know, you can almost, if you ever decided to be a professional grant writer, you could write your own ticket, because in the past, the boards of selectmen have tried to get grant writers to.
Interns and.
But I remember, and I'm not sure what term it was, we hired somebody, and it was, it was like early on, I think we had to contract the $10,000. We never spent the $10,000, because early on, we realized this is going nowhere.
Oh, good. That's good that you realize.
A professional grant writer had really written her own ticket.
Yep. And you get, you get you wrapped up with some other jobs.
Vehicle resources, see the Ton River, the Community Compact, that's very true. That's a huge building block. The next one, the M V P, also a very huge building block for us, so we're positioned very well. So, it's not a media. We have good resources. And then both of these, too, that very legislatively defined minds.
They make it happen.
Now they know, now they know who we are.
Yeah, exactly. Yes, and they don't throw our application in the garbage. Okay. Madam Administrator, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Mr. Ferry, Mr. Aguirre, for all that you do, while I'm not kicking you out, I just, before I forget to say thank you, I'm gonna mind my manners. Okay, new business. We are gonna review and sign the state primary election warrant, which we have here. Madam, do we have to read, is this the one we have to read? This is the one we have to read, isn't it? We read this, I'm pretty sure.
I don't think you have to read this. You know, it's presented here. It's publicized.
Okay.
Good night, thank you.
Good night, gentlemen.
It's only one page, and you just have to.
Talking to the left. I felt like that was a volunteer thing.
I'll read it, Mr. Ferry.
Yeah, whoever wants.
As long as it's a state, former state employee.
Correct. It's a state form.
That's the box you have to check.
Have to be qualified to be this thing.
I'm also a former state employee, just.
Oh, that is.
Surrounded by.
On an octagon alone over here, me, Mrs. Brady. An Andrew.
State employee.
You're a state employee.
I am a state employee.
But we outnumber you officially.
They're minority here. I'll take my comment now. You may, if you'd like to talk to me.
I'll take it.
I'll read it. To the constables of the town, Dyton, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth, who are hereby required to notify the one inhabitants of said city or town who are qualified to vote in primaries to vote at the Dyton Elementary School for precincts one and two on Tuesday, the first day of September 2020, from 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM for the following purposes, to cast their votes in the state primary for the candidates of political parties for the following offices. Senator in Congress for the Commonwealth, representative in Congress for the fourth district, counselor first district, senator in general court first Clement in Bristol district, representative in general court fifth Bristol district, registered, approbate was the county commissioner of Bristol County, as well as the county treasurer of Bristol County. You are directed to serve this warrant by posting a test copy thereof. One of each of the Dyton, one of each of the Dyton post offices, one at the town hall, and one at the main fire station. Hold on said Dyton seven days at least before the time holding said meeting. thereof, bear in mind, I make return of the warrant with what doings thereof at the time and place of said voting given on the. Our hands this date, the talk of August 2020 in the selectmen will be signed with that. It's posted, it's to be signed by the constable, that's what I posted, as well as attested by the town clerk.
So, we'll get that signed.
So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we sign the warrant for the state primary election as read.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. And again, thank you to our town clerk for her demonstration on the ballot. I didn't realize that so, that there were, there were a lot of instances of it not being filled out, yeah, properly. So, hopefully that gets fixed. Madam Administrator, we have an agenda item to appoint you to the joint, excuse me, Transportation Commission?
Yes, as an alternate.
I assume you want to, right?
Yes, I am an alternate. Mr. Ferry does this, and then if he can't attend, I'll help upon.
Okay.
I saw the. I'm sorry.
Second.
So, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Is this state or county or?
It's with Surbit, actually.
Oh, okay.
And hearing no further discussion, all of those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions, and the ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next, appoint Jennifer Duchkowski to the ADA commission. Jennifer, if you're watching, I felt like I pronounced your last name completely accurate, and I'm proud.
She gave us a thumbs up. You did.
Okay, all right. And I just wanted to, I know, I don't know if we can hear her. She had an application. I know she had expressed interest in being both on the finance committee and the ADA commission. We obviously don't make, we can't make a decision on finance committee. So, my understanding is she also does want to serve on the ADA commission as well?
That's her second choice, and we have it on here, and we need members, so we're happy to have somebody here. The finance committee will have to weigh in on this. They appoint their own member.
But that, they.
That's a different.
Okay, can you just, she.
Jen, do you have any comments?
I just want to make sure it's not either or, and she's okay with being on both, because I suspect she'll be on both.
She's, the question was, are you okay, if your decision between finance committee and ADA commission, is it either or for you? Or you're happy to serve on both?
I'm happy to serve on both. I'm happy to serve on one or the other, whatever is needed by the town, I'm happy to serve.
Thank you. Finance committee cannot serve on anything else.
That's the problem.
Oh, that is, yes. So, now our question.
No, you know what? I don't know who Nathan Tom is going to need to appoint, so we can appoint her to this. And if they consider her for the Fin Club, she's gonna have to make a decision.
Right. Right.
But in the meantime, she can work with the ADA Commission.
Well, now, because she can get you off the ground, because she's the quorum.
Yep.
Yes, but if we appoint her, we have the quorum, so we can actually start meeting.
Sure.
Uh, and we're looking forward to that.
Okay.
I'm not a voting member, but I'm a member of the ADA Commission, so we obviously would welcome Jen.
Fabulous.
I will say your last name, but I'm gonna butcher it, Jen, so, just call you Jen.
So, is that, um, is that acceptable to her, that we take this action tonight?
Jen, did you hear the plan? The plan is, we'd like you to serve as the ADA Commission. Uh, I believe they're willing and able right now to appoint you to the ADA Commission, and you would help get their projects off the ground, we've been waiting for a quorum for that committee for some time, and you would be that quorum. And then you would serve until such time as the Finance Committee would be meeting, which they're probably not gonna meet until we call a special town meeting anyway. So you have a handful of months to.
Oh, that's true.
Work with us and get that off the ground until you have to make a decision between Finance Committee and ADA. And so they're wondering if that is acceptable to you. Uh, you're muted, but I can, yeah.
Sorry, that's perfectly acceptable, thank you.
Perfectly acceptable.
That's good.
That's nice.
That's good.
Good news, we can check this off the, well, they're still making. But it's off the immediate emergency list, no quorum.
So I have a motion that, uh, Duchowski.
It's like Duchka, yeah, that was, that was very cool.
Yes, I'll be appointed to the ADA Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, anything under discussion for this?
Thank you for serving.
Yeah, thank you very much. It is, it's just people in our community stepping up, seeing a need, and, um, it's really nice to see, it really is.
And I know that she's also very busy in her life, so we appreciate you taking the time out to be part of this, uh, committee.
It'll be worthwhile, we promise.
Yes.
Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next, um, and this filled me with some sadness, but I, um, but I understand. Um, on our agenda is to accept the resignation of, uh, Jesse Berman from the D R Regionalization Study Committee and the D R Regional School District Facilities Committee. Um, one point of, um, just what I want to point out before we vote, is that we should probably get the D R Regional School District Facilities, um, position on here. If it's not already, I don't think it is, because obviously we haven't accepted the resignation yet. But what I mean is, I think that committee is, was trying to meet this month, and we should try to get that filled as soon as possible, because they're, I feel like they're at the beginning point, and now is the time to get someone in there before they start possibly meeting regular.
Which committee or board?
Uh, the D R Regional School District Facilities Committee, that's the one that D R is doing.
Okay.
Um, and so it's super important.
Because we only have like one seat.
Yeah, we only have, that's the other thing, I forget, thank you, you always point out, but I always forget the main point. We have to.
That's a truly high honor.
The main point is, we only have one person, now we don't even have any representation, so we need to, yes, thank you.
So I so, so we'll regret it, thanks.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next, we have, uh, discussed, uh, sending a letter to Senator Pacheco regarding Amendment eleven to House Bill H nine, uh, I believe it's actually H four nine one two.
Yes.
Um, and I wanted to, I, I'm gonna throw this over to Selecting Goulart, but I did print like a brief blurb of what this was, so anyone watching can follow. Uh, this, uh, bill, climate bill, a package, I guess they're referring to it.
It was specific amendment.
Yes, I'm just referring just to, to the bill. So, the House amended, uh, Climate Bill H four nine one two onto the Senate's Climate Bill S two five zero zero. And so I think why we're here discussing this tonight, sending the letter to Senator Pacheco, is because since the Senate already passed theirs, I believe they have to now adopt that specific House amendment, is that correct?
So, no, and so I reached down to, I sent a, an email to, uh, Senator Pacheco, and I sent one to Representative Hadad, and I attached Judge McGuire's ruling relative to I S M Sola versus the Town of Dyton, because that ruling now has case law and has effect. What happened was, this initial amendment made by Representative Roy, I think it was, got rewritten and got more amendments to it. So, some of this, uh, these emails that went back and forth, that I had sent to M M A, because way back when the decision came down in favor of the Town of Dyton, I sent it to M M A and asked if they send it out to everybody on the committee I sit on, because it was so important. And, uh, obviously John Robinson and Jeff Beck with that M M A were aware of this. When the amendment got rewritten with further amendments, I looked at that, um, Senator Pacheco's aide Mary called me on and said, unfortunately, this is passed the Senate. It has gone to a conference committee. Therefore, the person you need to contact and probably write a letter to is Representative Hadad, because she sits on that conference committee. So I sent, I think Mary sent a copy of those two documents, the original one and the rewritten one, and I will print them and get them to you. So, I read the, I'll call it the second amended version, and I read through again the decision from Judge McGuire. It is still lacking. So, I wrote to M M A and said, please look at the decision, the case law we now have, and we want, if possible, more amendments or agreements or whatever, that include the role of the Board of Selectment, the role of the Board of Assessors, and the fact that, according to Judge McGuire, the proposed pilot agreement must be passed at a town meeting. These are all key to what cities and towns should have, um, relative to protecting themselves as far as getting a fair break on tax revenue. Um, we support, obviously, we support clean and green energy, but all communities would like to get some kind of tax return, because they could, they, they would be committing these. So, um, the last information I got back from, um, Representative Hadad, was she is going to take the judge's decision to the conference committee, so they're all aware of what it says. Don't know what we're gonna get for amendments, but they're legislators, and most of them are attorneys, and I think they could read this and see the importance of the points you made. In addition, the points you made further strengthened the guidelines that were originally issued by the Department of Revenue. So, I'll print out all of that stuff.
Because we, you remember, we had questions from people with.
Well, attorneys kept saying, if it's not a law, it doesn't count. And our response was, if it's a guy, if there's no law, the guidelines from D O I are what.
Not our fault, there's no law.
Right.
From the town's perspective, you can't do anything.
I also contacted, uh, Ariella at M M A again, and John Robinson, their legislator, top dog, is pursuing this. Uh, they, I told her, the last thing I said, I heard from Representative Hadad, she is going to present it. So, I'm hoping with her taking it to that conference committee, and also M M A looking at it, that we are going to see a document that will be beneficial to solar energy, to the communities that permit them tax-wise, and to the proponents of solar farms. And that it's not a one-sided thing, and, um, they don't try to get tax exemptions from the HELOC tax court. There's no question in my mind that this bill is going to have ramifications, but any pilot agreements that have not been approved and that may come down the pipe. Hopefully, this is gonna end all of the questions and everything, because it's gonna be. The law says this, let's just negotiate and come into compliance. So, when I get a chance, I will print that stuff, and I'll give it to, uh, the town administrator, and, uh, this is Brady, so it can be photocopy, you'll have it. And if I hear anything else from M M A or anybody else, I'll let you know, but, um, so since the last time I wrote anything, which was the thirty-first.
Thank you, that's why, okay, that's why I was confused, why it was useless to send, I shouldn't say useless, but in terms of the process, Senator Pacheco had already voted on it, so.
Yeah, and I didn't realize that.
And it's in conference, so the House did, well, it's moving quickly.
Well, Mary, I was surprised, I sent that out on a morning, I didn't know what day it was, and she called me that very day and said, uh, very important, he's no longer able to do anything about this. This is what you have to do. If he can help you in any way, he will, but you need to contact, you know, Representative Hadad, and I thought, wonderful, she's on that committee.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't know it had made it to conference for like, for.
This is, they dismissed this at the last M A, M M A meeting, you and I, you tend to go in a car, I believe. So that was covered, and we got here ten, it wasn't virtual.
Right. And, um, all of the committee members that I served were email copies of the judge's decision. So, if everybody at M M A that would, like I said, Jeff Beck with it and John Robinson, um, we've got them on our side. So we'll see what we get out of this, but I think they're key points. And I said to Pat, the great thing is, there is now case law. This isn't a matter of, oh, well, nobody.
Well, wait till someone sees. Well, wait till there's an issue and someone brings it to court and figure it out.
I got my fingers crossed, now, whatever I hear, I'll let you know.
Well, I just wanted to, uh, thank you for keeping us updated on this. I know, um, we have gotten through the pilot saga. Uh, I feel like we've come up, come out sort of on the other end, and we sort of pumped the brakes. And I think for me, just as someone who could potentially, you know, be involved in that pilot negotiation, I need those ambiguities to be figured out before I would feel comfortable signing my name to one, which is why I haven't yet. So, um, I just really thank you for that, and thank you for keeping us updated.
You know, the other thing too, you and I were involved with a very lengthy meeting about one of, with what other components. And Selectman, uh, Pacheco is obviously, uh, getting up to speed with history. Um, but in all honesty, it couldn't be resolved that night. And it didn't have to go on as long as it did, because personal opinion, we were being fair and reasonable, and all we wanted was best for the Town of Dyton, work with a solar company, and everyone's happy.
And that's what we're doing.
It's gonna come out that way, right?
And that, that's probably fair. If you need anything from the board in terms of writing, um, a letter to the, the, uh, Conference Committee or to, uh, Representative Hadad at, in her capacity as a Conference Committee member, please let us know, and I'll put that back on the agenda.
Um, I'm gonna make a, a, a motion. Uh, that, um, I move that the board instruct me to send an email to Representative Hadad, advising her that we discussed H bill, uh, House Bill, whatever that number is, forty-nine twelve, this evening. And we are happy that she is going to take it to the Conference Committee, and we stand ready to help her provide any additional information needed relative to the, uh, requests we've made concerning Judge McGuire's ruling.
I would.
I'll second the motion.
And under discussion, could you just C C. the town administrator?
What, what, what I'm going to do, I can actually, since we're gonna vote this, I can, I can C C. all of you.
Okay.
Because we, we voted to do this tonight.
And we, we're not, it's just for visibility.
Uh, exactly, but, um, because of the M M A thing and the fact that we weren't meeting, I just felt this is imperative, I've gotta get this out.
And things are moving quick, too.
Yeah, because we don't know how long that committee's gonna be around, um.
And the time it got on here, it made it all the way to conference when we thought it was still in the Senate.
Exactly, exactly.
Things can, things can move very quickly.
So it's a session, okay, or?
No, they're like suspended right now, but I think they're gonna reconvene, because they got our home rule petition late.
Oh.
But they got it, and so I heard, and then I said, okay, well, when are you getting back to it? So, I think they're gonna, they have some things to work out still with COVID, so I'll be happy.
They haven't come up with a budget yet, right? Well, they're doing the twelve, but that.
Right, I think they've only made commitments about, you know, nothing, nothing extra.
I think the last thing that I heard along those lines, and I may have heard it from M M A, was we're looking like October before we may know what the state budget is.
Well, we got a grant opportunity, and they said, we think we're gonna get fund, I thought of you immediately. We think we're gonna get funding, but maybe not, so proceed with caution.
Anything else under discussion before we take the vote? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Uh, may I request that you take either nine G and then nine I out of order? The, um, public tonight is specifically waiting for those I's.
Oh, okay, thank you, yes, thank you, public, yep, I'm happy to do that.
I'll make a motion. Yeah, I'll make a motion that we take under the business, uh, nine G and nine H out of order.
Nine I, yeah, was it?
I, yes, I'm sorry, was I right?
No, no.
G and I.
Okay.
G and I.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. I suspect, I'm talking to the public, I suspect you have input, how I wanna do this part on the G and I is just, I wanna, um, us to present it, just, or the town administrator will present it. My colleagues will get the chance to weigh in, as will I. Then we're gonna take questions from the public on G and I specifically, is that okay?
She's fine.
All right, so Madam Administrator, um, I know you've been instrumental working with the business manager, uh, of the district, Mr. Kitchen on this, so I really want you to, uh, lay out the Chromebooks for us. Although I, I did go to, he did discuss it, so it is.
Brief history on why this is a thing. The CARES Act was federal funding that was passed down through the state. Each town was allotted money, districts, school districts that were regional, not granted their own CARES Act money. So they had to work with their participant towns to achieve their money, or to get their money. Since then, DESI has provided some funding that schools are able to get, a remote learning grant. Period, sorry, that sounded like I was gonna do. So, there's three pots of money that the school districts should look at. The Dyton CARES Act money, the Rehoboth CARES Act money, and then their remote learning tech grant through DESI. They, in FY twenty, so late June, did provide, this bug is like all over.
It really is, it came right for me, I watched it, it's on you right now.
Ah! It's huge!
I really liked it.
It's like all over, all right, so, the school district purchased for Dyton Elementary School and Dyton Middle School, P P E masks, disinfectant, and if anything over and above what they would normally provide. They happen to have a lot of disinfectant, we used it, we used it at, um, our town meeting. They just happened to have it, because they did close school, so they got a.
And they also gave some P P E to, um, our public safety departments as well.
They did, they did. So, we, in our monthly diary, I, I asked Paul to give Mr. Kitchen, hey, what are you doing, um, at the time, the deadline was June ninth, they had since pushed it back. But at that time, the deadline for us to apply for our FY twenty CARES funding was June ninth, I said, make sure you get that in to me. So, the deadline gets pushed back, the deadline becomes a Friday, we are closed on Friday, I submitted on the Thursday before, and then on Friday, I got the school's information. That is important, because I need you to know that none of our CARES money designated by the federal government has been used for the school system as of today. It's just on a spreadsheet. So the first round was for D E S, D M S, minimal cost. I think total altogether was like fifteen hundred dollars. Then came FY twenty-one cost, which I, which I literally just got last week, or maybe late the week before. A sprayer, each building got a sanitizer sprayer, so we would pay D M S a sanitizer sprayer, we would pay D E S sanitizer sprayer, and then the high school one would be split apart by our assessment, which is, for Dyton, it's four one point nine three five five five. Well, that's for FY twenty-one, which is in limbo, because Rehoboth has not had their town meeting, and the school is not up to date, off of a budget. So, then he mentioned purchasing Chromebooks on the phone, and I said, okay, well, how does this work? Because do you have to have both towns to agree? How are you going forward with this, what's happening? And so then I went on vacation. He spoke. He spoke with Rehoboth during this time, and there was also a school committee meeting during this time. So when I came back, I spoke with Paul yesterday, and I said, "Can you lay out exactly what's happening here?" And he did. So he used the DESI CARES Act money that the school bought away from either town, school district got itself, for the high school's Chromebooks. He then said, "Dayton, D M S Chromebooks are gonna cost forty-two thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars." Okay, nobody approved anything, it's just on a spreadsheet that he gave him, and here it is for your approval. If it's not voted on tonight, then Dayton Middle School doesn't get their Chromebooks and that's all there is to it. Very, very simple. We have only spent, we've spent less than, I don't have everything, so I don't have the construction cost of this room, but the COVID expenses have not reached a hundred thousand dollars for the town of Dayton as of today. And I don't have anything, unless we're gonna go forward and buy large-scale operation things for COVID nineteen, I don't see us reaching the six hundred fifty-one. So my personal opinion is that we could afford, through federal CARES Act money, to take care of the Chromebooks for the school system.
Which was, what, wasn't it forty-two thousand dollars?
I'm looking at it right now, forty-two thousand nine fifty-two.
Uh huh.
And that's for a hundred and eighty-two Chromebooks for Dayton Middle School.
For remote learning.
For remote learning.
Correct.
Which is a category allowed for CARES Act folks. So that's what's before you today, in a nutshell, if you have any questions on that, but I, I want. I'm not plugged in, which is why I'm worried, I don't wanna, I don't wanna move generally.
Okay, no worries. I want, so I wanna start with my colleagues, uh, Selectman Pacheco?
So this is gonna come out of the CARES money, so this is something that we have to appropriate out of a regular budget, but this is forty-two thousand.
It's an allotted cost, and so how it works is we, right now for us, we make the expenditure and the accountant puts it into, D O R has told us to do it this way. The accountant puts the expenditure as a deficit spending in an account, and then NEMA will sort out the CARES Act versus the FEMA money later. And we can apply for FEMA in September and October. So this is all a domino effect. For um the schools, the school department budget will accommodate this, they will make the payment, they will order and pay off that invoice, and then submit the claim to us, kind of like an insurance company. We will request that through CARES Act, get the twenty-five percent and give them that. And then when you do FEMA, give them the rest, that's how it works. But it would not be Dayton dollars that are not, I mean, of course it's Dayton dollars because that's who funds the school system, but it's not the town of Dayton's budget outside of the education assessment.
Uh, I wanna go to Selectman Blouett, before I do, I would just, did I hear, uh, we had a department head meeting recently, and I know, I believe you were on vacation, but I think the town accountant had said, and please, Mr. Blouett, if I'm, let me know via email if I'm wrong, but I think he said that, and he obviously cannot speak for the school, I don't think he's seen any of that, but he spoke just from the town perspective. He said he'd be surprised if we ended up using a hundred fifty thousand dollars of that. And again, not talking about the school, we don't, you know, but um that's what he said. Selectman Blouett?
So only the regional high school at this point in time? Mr. Kitchen had said they had, they got around six hundred thousand. What are they spending six hundred thousand on?
Verbally, I got this yesterday on the phone, special education costs, transportation, and these Chromebooks.
Okay.
So I think, and I have to verify this, I, I think, and I um, I sent an email but hadn't received word back. I think DESI has provided another grant round. I, I think there's another pot, cause it's specific to remote learning expenses. But for, for me, it's a little late in the game to, for DESI to announce that, so I don't know if the grant that the six hundred thousand that they got is the same grant or if it's two. So I still have to verify that.
So it could be more than six hundred thousand?
They could have more than six, they could, but I mean, take these with lots of grains of salt.
Okay, what I would like to see, what I have actually requested and partially gotten from the town of Rehoboth, I got an email from, uh, and I'm not sure if he's chairman anymore, Mr. Schwal, saying, "Has Dayton committed to using some of its CARES money, or federal money, to buy Chromebooks for middle school students?" And I wrote back, "Not that I'm aware of." He said, "Rehoboth is..." And this must have been that meeting or conversation you referenced. Um, and I'm trying to, I don't remember the exact words, but to the gist of it was, um, "We've talked to, and I think it was Dr. Azar and Mr. Kitchen, about what it would cost to get Chromebooks for grades five to eight." And he said, "We're not opposed to helping, you know, fund these programs. We wanna know what the district is spending theirs on first." Um, and they, as I said, I got part of it, my printer couldn't handle it. I actually got some invoices from Palmer, Rehoboth, and Beckwith, and I think there may even be D on there, but again, my printer croaked and couldn't handle it. I'm gonna try printing it from next door.
I had D Rs, and then obviously Dayton Middle and D. I have them right here, and I can email them to you, but I can't remember.
All right, well, what I would like to do is get, have copies and just give them to you and say, "Okay, this is my understanding, which would be our understanding of the money that the regional district got, they're gonna spend it on this. The town of Dayton is looking at forty-two and change. I'm not sure what the Chromebooks are gonna cost Rehoboth." My response to Mr. Schwal was, "I would like to know what the money is spent on. I don't wanna get just special ed or transportation, there's gotta be numbers." If you get this grant, it's like you set up a spending plan or a budget and say, "We need X for this and Chromebooks," put dollars with it. Um, what I said to Mr. Schwal was, "I will ask the board about this, what, what are we doing? Um, I agree, I would like to know what the district is spending the money on, and I would like to see something, a spending plan, a budget, or whatever. But I feel strongly that whatever we do as towns, all students are treated the same." Now, if the regional high school can fund Chromebooks for nine to twelve, and they need help with five to eight, that's reasonable. And my impression was, with the last email I had, cause I think Rehoboth was gonna talk about it this week. I hadn't heard from them.
Monday, I spoke with Ms. Aruda this afternoon, and she wants to know where you all land tonight. I know we need some.
Right, and, and my, my little point was, um, I don't wanna get into anymore like, "Well, Dayton spent this on this, and Rehoboth only spent this, or Rehoboth spent this number, but Dayton is only doing this." With this grant money, I don't wanna get into a contest about trying to outdo anybody. I think the main focus is, all of our kids go into that regional high school. We want them to all have the same educational advantage, and if every kid needs a Chromebook, we should do what we can to take care of that. I just want some additional information, so that's, that's, that's all I know about it at this point.
So do you say that they're paying for the high school Chromebooks, but this?
The district.
The district. But they're asking us to pay for them, our middle school.
Middle school, and then they're asking Rehoboth for Beckwith.
Right. So that, that price is, is reasonable, I bought a Chromebook a few months ago with Solting, have a side, that price is reasonable. I think it's important that there's still the tab available to them. I think school's going back in, maybe the sixteenth of September, so we don't have that much time to play with this. I mean, especially here when I'm chairman, saying, Mr. Schwal is not the chairman anymore, I forget who it is.
Yes, it's Mr. Batman, yes, Mr. Batman.
The chemistry's good.
Yeah, it's like a baton. Um, I feel the same way, I do wanna know what, I do think we should know what the school is spending its grant money, but for me personally, I don't think we need to hold up, um, or, or not authorize the purchasing of the Chromebooks from the CARES Act fund, waiting for that information, so that's my.
They're gonna order anyhow and then just tell us, isn't that it?
Well, they're gonna order for the high school.
Yes.
But we are essentially the deciders about the middle school votes.
But they're gonna audit them.
They, yes, and then they pay for it, and then we put the claim in, when we get the money, we give whatever percentage it is.
We like reimburse them.
Yeah, we're like an insurance company, like, for, for that.
I know, I would be surprised if the town spends, Rehoboth, I believe, got over a million dollars.
Right.
I don't think either of us is gonna spend up to what we got. Uh, let's say it's our allotment, um, and my only concern at the regional high school is, um, "Oh, I don't have a problem with Chromebooks, I don't want just, well, this and that." I would like to know exactly what it is, because obviously, at the regional district, if I were there, I would be saying, "We need to spend as much of this as we can. It's easier to spend it at the regional district than it is in a town" because of the kind of things you have to deal with, whether it's special ed or transportation or whatever. Um, I'm just looking for additional information, but certainly, um, I want Dayton and, as I stated, Rehoboth students all to have the same advantage. Um, and my impression was, Rehoboth is willing to uh do for their five to eight students what we're talking about doing for ours.
I've got the same impression, some people are.
Madam Administrator, did we get any?
So Jen is uh waiting.
Okay, yep, she can, if, if we have more, we can all address it, you know what she says. Yep.
You're on.
Thank you, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I just wanted to uh encourage that making an action now on this is essential, given that the turnaround time for ordering Chromebooks and having them shipped and received is longer than normal, given the constraints of the pandemic. And the competition for the supply, given the incredible demand from lots of school districts, is very high. There are many families with local children who do not have a dedicated device, meaning a one-to-one distribution. And given that we have been notified that students will need to be online in asynchronous manner, meaning at the same time as your teacher, um, they can't stagger the usage between children in a household. So, um, and because of this, learning will stagnate, stagnate if we're not able to access the devices. This CARES Act money should be used directly affect our community in a way that can give the most impact for the longest term. This investment in technology would likely take us through any additional spikes in the virus that may occur throughout the winter and help stem any detrimental effects of this change in educational structure that children have grown up used to. So I would encourage the board to consider ordering on this tonight so that that money can be put to work and, like I said, get those orders placed as soon as possible so we can queue for receiving those of the books.
Thank you.
What's the total number of Chromebooks?
A hundred and eighty-two, for Dayton, a hundred and eighty-two.
But there's more than a hundred and eighty-two students in grades five to eight, do they have some?
They have some, they have some.
Wasn't there something about split sharing?
Yes, they, they have some, my understanding is they have some. This is in addition to, this is what they need.
So if they buy an additional hundred eighty-two, let's say you get two kids, and right now they're sharing one Chromebook, will the new Chromebooks be equally, I don't know, compatible?
So from what I heard, oh, I see, well, from what I heard, the district basically puts the software on there, including all of the security features, so that when they bring them to school, their system is not corrupt, based upon all these machines. So that, and other districts are doing this too, I've heard this from many different districts about why they are choosing to give every single student a Chromebook, not just household.
Yeah, that would make sense, because if you take the Chromebook to school, you're probably not in the same grades or classes, and you've gotta have, yep.
That's true. Did we get any more input on that?
I had no more input, but I guess Mrs. Ray, you have to say.
Uh, just before we?
No.
Okay, uh, so if we have, if my colleagues don't have any more questions uh or comments regarding this, I will entertain motions.
Is the funding CARES?
Yes, it would be, yes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we authorize the expenditure of forty-two thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars from the CARES funding to purchase a hundred and eighty-two Chromebooks for grades five to eight at the Dayton Middle School.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, anything else under discussion? I just wanted to thank uh the public for their input on this item, thank you, Mrs. Trushkarsky. Uh, if we have no further input, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. Next is something I had requested uh to be on the agenda. It was something that actually uh a resident uh had forwarded to me. And I thought it was a pretty good idea, given not only what is going on in our country, um, but the fact that residents uh held a rally in support of racial and social justice just two months ago, and I felt like it was a little timely. So I wanted to have a bit of a discussion on this and see if it was something that we wanted to establish for the town of Dayton. And so what I included was some information that I had gathered from Easton, which does have a very vibrant, is I guess the word I would use, vibrant and very active, I know you live there, uh, Human Rights Committee. Um, and I also wanted us to discuss, if we do agree to establish it, what its mission would be. And so that's why I included some very specific information regarding the mission from Easton's uh Human Rights Committee. Um, and so I guess I'll just start this off. Um, in Easton, um, their description of what their committee does and who they are are, "Residents dedicated to building a stronger and more unified town, free from bigotry, hatred, intolerance, and disrespect." Uh, current membership for them includes nine at-large citizens, I feel like that might be tough for Dayton. Um, just, and I don't mean that tough like people won't wanna do it, I mean, like, look at all the committees that, it's, it's hard, people are busy, so.
Easton has like three times the population.
Oh, okay, see, I thought it was maybe double at best, okay. Um, and there is a board of selectmen member, uh, one school committee member, and one civil rights officer. I don't believe we have, do we have that?
A civil rights officer, yeah.
Yeah, so we wouldn't be able to obviously do it exactly, that we'd have to do it the Dayton way, so. Um, I wanted to open this up uh for discussion, cause I don't want, I think we all know where, obviously, I put it on here, so I will support it, and, and I think it's important that we have it, but I do obviously always wanna hear uh from my colleagues. Selectman Blouett, did you wanna start?
Without, um, without going into detail, and I read about a family that sounds like they were harassed and treated terribly, um, and again, without details, was this something that had gone on for a period of time, and this family, um, tried to, I don't know, take appropriate measures to have this harassment, whatever it was, stopped? And it got to the point that there wasn't a resolution, and they actually moved out of town.
That's the one in Easton that occurred?
Yeah, I'm not, but I'm not familiar, was it?
That's on their website, I think that's literally the first thing.
It was horrible, I'm.
If I go to the town of Easton website?
It's, yeah.
It's this picture?
They, yep, yeah, that's on, like, the first thing.
Are, are there details there?
Yes.
There's more, yeah, I didn't put them, I didn't put them.
No, and I don't, and I don't wanna get into them.
People and the news about this, and then there was like a GoFundMe, and that was taken down, it was a, a big, big to do.
And this is recent?
It's relatively, probably like two months ago, yeah.
Yeah, June, yeah, isn't that crazy?
And I guess it just was so, it just didn't stop. And we have residents that have Black Lives Matter, Black Lives Matter signs in their front lawns, and people keep stealing them. Um, so there are lots of things going on in Easton that this committee handles.
I think they steal them, some have been stolen here in town, in town.
Having the um police, a police member, it's a police officer, uh, who's a, the civil rights person is a police, he's not listed here, I don't know why, um, it's a different, but he, he?
I know, they fly.
It's not a fly, it's not, it's like a H, a, a.
It looks like a horse fly.
And also, it's flying out my face, I think I got a pass.
We need to direct money for requisition, some kind of bug killer.
Oh, my gosh, where's that pest control superintendent? Vacant.
No, we, 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 here, Mr. Malik.
I am not a country person, that's, I'm in the wrong spot, right?
Did these attacks begin after I?
Well, we don't, it's a vacancy, we have to fill.
The people, he's doing the job.
I think it's a, it's, it looks like a horse fly, it's a.
It does, I know, it's big, I'm sorry.
So uh, back to that, so I think it's smart to have a relationship with the police officer because if there's a hate crime like this, um, there's some quick swift action instead of having to be, you know, going on, uh, I think these poor people are like, we're just gonna leave. Um, it's very upsetting to know that that's in your community, I have no idea until that's drawn. To know that that's in your community. I have no idea until that's broken out. I know.
We have had, just to tie this all together, and it literally popped up on my Facebook feed probably a couple of weeks ago and I was like, how timely is this? We all remember the Center Woods, the Center Street Woods, that sign, it was an old sign. And someone put a swastika on it, didn't they?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Or they wrote, they wrote like racist live here or something like that. And it was just.
It was definitely a swastika, as a matter of fact, back in another place.
Residents from.
The other place one disappeared is on the lower end of Main Street, Water Street. It was painted in the road because somebody contacted me about it. They were walking their dog and they saw it. And I mentioned it to Mr. Ferry. He says, we're aware of it, we're gonna take care of it. And then this is no, no comment or complaint about Mr. Ferry. But a week later, the person said to me, by the way, I thought you said it was gonna get taken care of. I said, he's, he said it will be done, it will be done. Well, I saw it again. Be patient, it will be taken care of. But the person was very offended when they saw it in the road. And I don't, it's paint or chocolate. I guess as if it was paint because chocolate, a rainstorm would get rid of it. I guess what bothers me about this is this, this family in Easton. And if this were to happen in Dayton, or if it is happening in Dayton, I mean, I can't tell you I'm aware of it, but my concern is that a family would have to feel their only solution is get out of this town and go someplace else. Because the sad thing is you could move and end up in a similar situation. And there should be recourse for anybody who is treated in this manner, for whatever reason. I've said this before. The, what's at the forefront right now is racial equality. This town has a history of discrimination going back to North Dayton and South Dayton. Because South Dayton was south of the, south side of Center Street and North Dayton was north from the north side of Center Street. And people in South Dayton were, for the most part, Portuguese immigrant farmers who came to this country to get a better life, worked hard, ran farms quite. And another group was the women who worked in the mills in Fall River, the sewing shops, the whatever. And they were looked down upon. Because in the north end of town, a lot of the people worked in the mill and they felt that that was, I don't know, status or something else. And it also had, not only their ethnic background, but another part of it was, the majority of those people were Catholics. And there was discrimination about that. As we've heard over the years, like when you take the city of Austin, the north end is this and the south end is this and another group is, and it seems like there's all this bickering going on. There are still people in town who refer to North Dayton and South Dayton. My position is there's only one Dayton. We have two post offices. If we had one post office, I don't think that would solve the problem. It, but by the same token, people that, back in those days, that was still around, talked about how badly they felt. They almost felt like they lived in another community. And it was, quite frankly, I think probably one of the first, if not the first Portuguese selectmen, may have been Frank Torres, okay? He worked in South Dayton. He lived in South Dayton. He worked in ICI.
Now look at the board.
Right, now we're all Portuguese.
So, so, you know. I guess back in those days up to where we are now, and never still may be that kind of prejudice, whether it's ethnic, whether it's religious, whether it's color, whatever. It just seems that over a period of time, they were able to work it out, get along together. I think one of the big pluses was when they built the Dayton Elementary School and they closed North School and South School. Because now all the kids go into a one-to-eight school in town. There was only one. So there wasn't any more, that eliminated part of that division. Racial unrest, inequality, discrimination, I think runs a lot deeper. I think it's more difficult to overcome. It just, in reading this, really concerns me that the only solution for this family was move out of town. Because as I said, how do you know you're not gonna get it somewhere else?
And I will say, the community, like myself included, when we found out about that, we were like, oh my God, like there was a large outpouring of support for the family. You know, horrified that they had to go through that and most were unknown.
Well, I think the point is, the reason I put this on here is because we don't have to watch people leave. We can actually let them know that the, the people we want leaving are the people doing the perpetrating the racism and the bigotry. And we don't want the nice people leaving. We don't care what you look like, where you're from, none of that.
I don't know if you saw Channel 10 last night and the night before probably, there was an incident in Barrington that was filmed. Somebody's camera. And it was a white gentleman using racial epithets and swear words, I mean disgusting words, about a, a black person, a black family. And the people who witnessed it were appalled this happened in their community. And when I saw this, I'm thinking, you know, the, the reporters interviewed the person who made these statements and everything else. I can't tell you, he expressed remorse. But there's a, I'll call it an upscale community in Rhode Island, not far from here, in Barrington, where this had happened. It was on Rumstick Road, which is an upscale area. But there's not to be a way for people in any community to have access to assistance that if they're being harassed or discriminated against or vulgar words are being written or swastikas are being drawn here. There's gotta be a way to address this within the community so you don't drive people out.
I agree.
I mean, we'll never, we'll never convince everybody that everyone is equal, but if we can convince the majority of people, we've all gotta live together, we've all gotta work together, and quite frankly, with this virus thing, we're all in this together. And if this article, without knowing all the details and listening to the news, really made me think about this. And I felt pretty good about the fact that things improved, things in Dayton have improved over the years. From my first experience with this was when I came as a freshman at Dayton High School, as a Berkeley tuition kid. I had friends from Dayton. And I hear remarks like, oh, well, they're from North Dayton, or they're from South Dayton. I looked at them, I couldn't understand this. But you know, over the years, and I moved to town in sixty-two, and I heard, let's say, an older generation talk about this. And I really believe over the years, there has been an improvement.
I know, public, I also wanted to thank.
Can I come?
Yeah, of course, Jen, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So my daughter Stephanie also lives in Easton and she, although you don't see the name on this list, if you go to the website, you see the current members of that committee. She's on that, that list, so this is on a current list. So when my daughter joined this committee, I talked to a tournament director about it at the time. We were quite ready for it, whatever. But I'm strongly in favor of this. My family, just so everybody knows, I call us the United Nation. My daughter was, my oldest daughter wasn't afraid to bring her future husband, my son-in-law, whose family came from Colombia. She wasn't, she didn't have to worry about what her parents are gonna, how they were gonna react to her. Because I was born on the right day. I wasn't born a racist boy. And my other daughter Stephanie was able to bring my future son-in-law, her future husband, my son-in-law, whose family came from Haiti. She felt, she knew that he would be welcome into our house. They're both, I shouldn't have to say it, but they're both great guys. They're both great fathers. Prejudice is, is a terrible thing. We had our neighbors, our immediate neighbors, when they moved in, they're from Haiti. There was racist pamphlets put in our neighborhood. This is maybe eight, nine, 10 years ago. So there is clearly racism in town. This committee, as I see it, is to prevent situations like you just referenced that happened in Easton. This is to educate the people. This committee does stuff like, they invite people from diverse backgrounds to go to dinner together or have a community meal so that they can see, you know, how people. I grew up in Swansea, it was a lily-white community. The only black person that we had was living in, let's call Stephen's home, Stephen's Home for the Boys. That was the only, our only contact. But I wasn't born to be a racist. My father and mother, they weren't racist. I do understand, when Mr. School I was talking about, the difference in, in the Portuguese community, there's even, I've worked in those mills and factories in Florida, there's even discrimination between the immigrants, Portuguese, and Portuguese second generations. There was, there was even discrimination against them. There's discrimination regarding religion. It's been in the past and it's, people should be able to believe in whatever they want. They don't want to believe in God, that's fine. If they want to believe in God or believe in Allah or whatever, that's, that's, that's their belief, so. I strongly support that we form this committee. I'd like to be on the committee. Obviously, maybe you have an interest also in the committee.
I don't think I have.
But Dayton.
I do, I like it, so.
Yeah. Dayton is, is becoming a more diverse community, which I think is for the good. I, and I'm pleased that we're becoming more of a diverse community. I know that when I worked in the court system, we had, we had support staff that were racist, but when we started hiring minorities, they saw that they're just normal people. People have these prejudices when they don't communicate with someone of a different race or different religion or different ethnicity. So I think it's, it's very important. My daughter does great work in this group here. It's, it's a great committee. It's bigger than what probably Dayton needs. But the purpose of it is to try to avoid some of those situations where people. When my daughter was looking, my daughter and someone were looking for a house. The, the house that they were looking at next door, they had a Confederate flag. So guess what? They weren't gonna buy that house. But they, the person who had the Confederate flag did it for a reason. They didn't want minorities to come into their community, so they knew that they were sending out a message. I don't think Dayton is racist like a lot of other towns. However, I'm convinced there are racists in town.
Of course.
And we're not gonna end it, as I think Mrs. Goulart said, that we're not gonna end it. But there's discrimination against people's sexuality. I want to talk to you about that.
I was just gonna say.
People have to, I mean, we, we should, what do I care what people do in their lives? It doesn't, you know, if you're opposed to gay marriage, don't marry gay person. It's simple as that. Don't worry about somebody else who is happy to marry somebody of the same sex. What do we care? So.
I agree.
And we made an argument, who's gonna balance the committee, but I.
We're not.
I support this and it's needed. We want to avoid those situations. We're gonna have situations, but we want to avoid the situation. We're fortunate in town for the Black Lives Matter, non-binary, the Black Lives Matter, we had three of our police officers go to that and they nailed it. And that, to me, that impressed me. I wasn't there, red, white, after, but that impressed me so much that our police department was willing to take. Which couldn't have been an easy thing for them to do because there was certain police.
People on both sides of the town too.
Yes, yes. So I, I was impressed with that. So we don't have the racism that other communities have, but we all know situations, I know situations where racist remarks from a person has got latched over. I mean, it just, in town, in town, so. I'm hoping that we decide that we're gonna form the committee. We can decide what the mission is gonna be and how many members and all that. I think it's, it's needed. It's for education to let, let everybody know how other people think and how other people live and just, let's all get along.
Yeah, I want to go to the public, but I just wanted to add, I think that was, both my colleagues spoke beautifully and I appreciated the last part. Where you said that it, it is a lot about the bigotry and the racism that's very prevalent right now, but it is about homophobia and just hate in general, intolerance for just anyone not, like we see it all the time. I see it, saw it today. I mean, it's enough is enough and I feel like forming this, I feel like I'm getting loud when no one's disagreeing with me, so I apologize.
It's like, just be careful.
It's the crescendo, everyone. But I think this is a statement of our values. This is who we are. This, this is who we've been the whole time. And I think that, that will help. I do want to go to the public. I'm not turning off, we will come back to us, absolutely.
Jen?
Thank you. Sounds like I'm probably preaching to the choir here, but.
Nope, you're on the chair.
I just wanted to say that the front page of our website boasts that we're a small town with a big heart and the best way to show our heart is through concrete actions. And that forming this committee would make a clear statement that we are a well-meaning, inclusive community. We recognize that we may not be at our best right now in terms of inclusivity at this point in time, but this committee would show our commitment to learning and to growing and to listening to one another as a community and it would be a very positive step for the community. So I very much encourage this action and making it forward.
Thank you. And I do, I would be very remiss if I didn't point out that this actually, I forget how this came up, but Tom Pyer's daughter actually reached out to me about this and pointed this out. I forget what the conversation was. We were having a discussion about doing some sort of a, it's not a town function, but residents coming together and doing a forum. And then she forwarded me this and said, do you know Easton? So I don't want to take credit for this. It was definitely something that was brought to my attention and I thought it merited being on here for discussion. So I guess if we do want to go this route, I guess the discussion we should have is how many members? I think nine would be impossible for, for Dayton, but maybe I'm wrong. And then do we want to agree on like a general mission? Like what is their goal? What are, what are they gonna do?
You know, before we actually do that, would it be worth considering asking some of these people from Easton who are actually in this role to come in and do a little public discussion thing so that, one of the important things is education. I often said, if everybody left town and went to a place where you had to interact with a lot of people, literally going to the university as an employee, I got an education. And I don't mean going to UMass Dartmouth and earning a degree. I'm talking about the daily act of going into the city, meeting all sorts of people, traveling in very tight quarters. I can honestly say I never had a problem. And it didn't matter who it was, where they came from, what color they were. If you got bumped, and I don't mean meaning maliciously, if you're on the T. There were days when if you crashed, you couldn't fall down.
You know this.
But what I found was, if you bumped somebody, you automatically said, I'm sorry, or they said, I'm sorry. Or in just that daily experience, plus all the people I worked with from the, you name the ethnicity, I probably worked with them somewhere. That was an education in itself. And I, I didn't hold, and still don't hold, racial, racial opinions. But I've often thought to myself, you know, if more people could be exposed to this and I'm people, so you've got to be crazy because I wouldn't do that. I actually looked at, I think it was the last time, it may have been the federal census, maybe it's. I think at the time, this may not be exact, Dayton's racial makeup was ninety-seven point something white. African-Americans was point five something. I think Native Americans were point four something. Asians were point four nine, or I may be mixing those up. But I looked at those and I thought, gee, there's more ethnic groups in this community than I was. Of course, they have other groups besides what I'm, those are sticking in my mind. And, and I thought, you know, along the lines of what we've seen in some of the big cities, decommissioning the police force, cut their budget by seventy percent. And I figured to myself, but that wouldn't work in Dayton because number one, we, thank goodness, haven't had the kind of incidents that some of the cities have had. We don't have the same makeup population-wise. All our kids go to one school or in each grade level. So it's not like, we don't have the divisiveness that the big cities have or communities with multiple school facilities. And quite frankly, it's a blessing. But in, in thinking about all of this and what we're talking about tonight, and since we want to, regardless of how many people we would like to have on this committee, commission, whatever we wanna call it, I'm just wondering if we could have a little, if they're willing to, come in and just talk about what this committee does in Easton. We know why it was formed. And so that people in Dayton, who may be trying to. We know why it was formed, and so that people in Dayton, who may be trying to figure out, what are they talking about, and what do they wanna do, or how is this gonna, what are they, you know, what is, what is this committee, what kind of powers and duties and whatever, and all this other stuff? If we could have a little presentation by people who have served, and have some experience, and could say, "Well, this is what we've done in our community, these were problems we've addressed." Uh, as I say, I, I think the worst possible outcome is somebody is driven out of town, because they had no other recourse, 'cause there's gotta be. No one should be driven from their community.
I just wanted to, uh, you did raise a good question, what, what would they do? So, they do delineate like what the actual responsibilities are. Um, so they say, uh, one, education, so advocate appreciation for and respect for diversity. Two, community outreach, organize community events to constructively promote diversity and tolerance. And three, community response, respond to issues that challenge the human rights of any individual or group, uh, in our commi, community. And for Easton, they say, uh, they need to meet at least five times a year. Um, may work with like committees of other localities, and with other organizations that share a common purpose. Um, should use any available materials, advice, or assistance from other organizations that may be helpful in accomplishing its mission. Um, and the committee will report at least any honest activities to the board of selectmen. So, pretty good.
So, I can, uh, reach out to my daughter, so I get to see her again.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll see her, uh, this Sunday, it happens to be her birthday, uh, this Saturday, so we're having a get-together. I'll wear my mask, all social distancing in my house outside. Uh, but I'll talk to her if it's okay with the board, and she can bring some other members.
Sure.
And we can set up, uh, see what it's best, as far as the agenda goes, when they can come and speak to us.
Sure.
And, uh, we can decide whether I would wanna go forward with it.
Yeah.
I think the board wants to go forward, but I think we want some more ideas as to how it...
I think we might need to be a little more focused, then, I think they're, they have more members, so they're allowed to be a little bit more, they can do more, I'll say. They can, they can, they have the, the people to delegate certain things to, so, yeah, we'll bring them in and, and see what they think.
And, and I think, since we have...
They did ask that, as well, so I'm sure.
Depending upon the size of the, uh, committee, um, you want townspeople to get involved. There may be townspeople listening saying, "Well, that sounds okay, but what exactly..." And as you said, Easton is bigger than us. In this community, let's face it, the social events are all pretty much around the Lions Club. Now, we aren't having the two biggest events, which not only brings our communities together, um, I'm hoping we're gonna have our lights on, uh, by then, hopefully. Um, but outside of some of the churches that have some kind of social events, um, the only other event that I can think of that I've attended in this town was when they had the, the, the Day of Thanksgiving, the inter-tribal council. And there were people from all over the place. I mean, some people traveled quite a distance to come to that. And one of the first things they did, and as Ken said, was, whether you believe in God or not, one of the first things they did was they formed a circle, and everybody held hands, and it was, as a matter of fact, it was, uh, Rusty Haskell, uh, the chief, is he here tonight? Who, um, I would say offered a prayer, but not to, um, not religion-specific. It was just thanks for, "We're all together, we're all here for a common cause. We are having this celebration because, quite frankly, the town acquired, conservation acquired the property. It solved a big problem for them that had caused a lot of unrest in the community, in the neighborhood." But I guess it was, um, probably one of the best examples of bringing people together without, um, focusing on a lot of bad stuff, but certainly sending out, I'll call it, good karma.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that was just one event, and it was really related to everything.
Yeah.
But where we don't have, I'll call them, social gatherings, and this year, because of the virus, we haven't been able to. Um, and, and even the schools haven't had, haven't been able to have their, I'll call them, community events. I know the Agus School is, there's no, no fall show, uh, and, um, we've been struggling to have graduations this year. But if we could get people interested in doing something like this...
Oh, this committee...
I think it'd be a real plus.
We won't have any issue. It is nine thirty-five, so I'd like to, we need, we still have executive session, so we're gonna speed things up here, so do we wanna take this under advisement?
If I text from my wife, she wants to go, I'm breaking home for breakfast, so...
Me? Don't answer yet, don't commit to that.
Can you, can you, for all of us?
Tell her you're in North Dayton at the present time, 'cause you're on the north side of the town.
Yes, yes. Okay, so we'll, yeah, exactly, chicken, so, and anyway, do we know, so, does the board, is it okay if I reach out to my daughter, and she can reach out to other members, and we can talk about, what are we gonna put on the agenda? I know we've got a little bit of agenda already for the twenty-sixth, or maybe in September, if that's not too late for the board, so...
Mr., Mr. Chan, uh, for a future agenda, I, I will, um, kind of restate what Mr. Pacheco said, and what I had said, that we invite, um, members of the, uh, committee, uh, Human Rights Committee from Easton, to make a presentation at a future meeting, if they are willing, so that we can, um, get information out to town residents about what that committee does, uh, to see what, you know, we can do here in our own town.
Mm-hmm. I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. Um, and thank you, everyone. Uh, next on the agenda is to review and discuss the Historical Commission's Boston Post cane recommendations. Um, I'm gonna time limit this to ten minutes, because we still have the building committee discussion, which, and I wanna be done by ten, so we can go into the executive session. Um, Madam Administrator?
This is here because I received, and, um, the first question is on the address to the board from Pat Gales, they're working on revising the handing over the Boston Post cane, so this is, um, basically what they are looking to establish. They want to build a case for the Boston Post cane, they're looking for you to designate some space and where that would go, um, and the rest is all here. So, they're putting a little, um, I think it's like a Boston Post cane committee, but Mrs. Gales and I talked about it. We randomly found our Boston Post cane in Westbridge Water while we were cleaning something, and revived it, and, um, like, it was like wrapped in paper, it could not have been more like, "Oh, what is this? Oh, it's the Boston Post cane."
You're talking about that cane, or you're talking about Easton?
In Westbridge Water.
Oh, I see.
We randomly found it cleaning with it. So, uh, we've revived our own, so I had sent her to Westbridge Water, I sent her some documents, and I had an ad about how we started up again, so she used those. And, um, this is what the historical commission has recommended to you, so this is here for your input, acceptance, blessing, and what else?
So I used to be a member of the historical commission, so I'm familiar with the situation. So we're fortunate, we still have our Boston, uh, Post cane, and a lot of towns have lost it, because the ghost of the senior person in town, person passes away, and then the family, sometimes they check herself.
Yeah.
It's my understanding, uh, that they wanna have, uh, Tom Ferry build a case. I was suggesting in this room here, maybe in that corner over there, someplace, that it might stick out a little bit.
Is it a, is it a cane fountain wall?
It's gonna be a case that, my understanding is gonna be a case that's gonna be attached to walls, with glass, you're gonna be able to see the cane.
Yep.
And future recipients of, uh, the Boston, uh, Post cane. When I actually get the cane, they may, they'll get some kind of proclamation, I think of this thing, they recommended that they come before the board, and we can, we have to be careful about this, because you're, you're giving it to the oldest person in town, and that person may not be able to come here soon. But I'm okay with the board going, so that, whether it's a nursing home, or whatever, that person's a house, uh, so. I'm, I'm in favor of, and they'll, they'll give a proclamation, and we talked about what the historical commission wanted to buy, but maybe give them a lapel pin or something that they can wear, uh, rather than actually give them the physical cane, because it's been about a hundred years, at, at least a hundred years with this cane, and we're fortunate that we have it, and we don't wanna lose it, so now we wanna preserve it. Uh, but we also wanna, uh, thank, not thank, but congratulate the oldest person in town, and give them some recognition, and I think it's good that they want the, they'll be involved in this, obviously. In the past, the Historic Society has been involved in this, so we've actually healed the cane. And, you know, Patrick Menjies was a member of the Board, so he represented the board, and he came to one of our meetings, and, uh, he gave his, uh, senior person the cane. And the families invited him, all that kind of good stuff, but it's a good thing to recognize the, uh, senior person. Understanding that the senior person, uh, may also be separate from the mention of the committee, so there's a bunch of different things that go along with this, but, uh, I'm glad that the historical commission is, I imagine, on this night, but hopefully we will adopt this.
As presented? As presented?
As presented, yes.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Um, so, who do I?
Uh, the only thing I would say is the commission shall define the criteria. That criteria is already defined by the Boston Post. And we just got through talking about discrimination, and I can remember Mrs. Santos talking about this. Um, Mr. Cronin, Mr. Menjies and I were invited to attend the presentation at the, um, the presentation of the cane, not actually given it, it was presented, but it was brought back. Um, the oldest resident was a nun, at the Novice Year. And, uh, so it was all arranged, they provided a nice luncheon, uh, and they, we saw it in the evening, and Mrs. Santos talked about how, when this award was created, we were excluded. So how's that for discrimination? Women were not eligible. It was like...
True.
Actually, I do remember that, but, um, the, uh, I think it's a good idea. I can tell you, I went, I actually went to Canaan, New Hampshire, which is practically on the Connecticut River, because this very elderly friend of my mother's, um, who was also over a hundred, uh, was given the cane, the recognition by the town of Canaan.
Mm-hmm.
But what they did was, they had replicas made up, so at the, uh, the symbolism was, "Here it is," and it was in a nice case. Uh, this is a valuable, uh, cane, it's got gold on it. This is not meaning, it's worth something. Um, but they explained the whole thing, and, uh, then they presented her with the replica, which she could keep, and she was very pleased with that, and, um, uh, so when we were there that night, uh, up on Elm Street, uh, and, and Mrs. Santos was there, and she gave the history about it, and, um, it was presented, and, and of course, the family was all the women that lived there, that knew this elderly lady. Um, when, I think when she passed, the next person was also a member. However, she was a more, I'll say, private person, and she didn't want any ceremonies or anything. Um, I've only been to, I've actually been to two, 'cause Leo, Leo Delarue, that one was held right at the prime time, when he was the oldest one. Um, but it's, it's really impressive. The person who, if they're able to understand what it is, uh, it's quite an honor. And, um, they've always been very happy times.
We awarded once, won once, and the woman receiving it had, it was four generations. It was her, then her granddaughter had a baby, and it was adorable, so we took a picture, like, it's fun. It's, it's a fun, like, small community thing to do.
My mother was...
And so you see generations of families come together.
My mother was recognized as the oldest resident, uh, in Berkeley, and she was unable to attend, because she was probably a hundred and five at that point. But what they had was a ceremony, and Senator Pacheco and the representative, um, not the ones, not the man or the woman, his wife before him, but the man who was the estate rep. They were both there, and they read proclamations, and the family, my brother and sisters were there, and it was, uh, town officials, um, were there, and it was just a nice, uh, event, and...
We have two minutes left, so we need to talk about this. So, are we changing any language in here? I'm sorry, I, I...
No, that's okay, I can.
No.
So there's two things you need to do, you need to vote on whether or not you want the case to go forward.
Okay.
That's number two, and then the other one is to tell the historical commission to go ahead, if you, if that's...
Okay, I'm fine with it, so I'll entertain motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Well, there is a motion, and, uh, I thought, didn't you, did you make a motion?
No, I didn't make a motion.
Oh, wow.
Well, I, I talked about that, I'm in agreement, and we already accepted it. I'll make a motion that we have a case built for the Boston Post cane by the Highway Department, in whatever costs, obviously we will, um, pay for it. Do we have to be specific as to where it's gonna go in the case?
Yeah, I, I think it should be in here.
Yeah, it should be in there.
It should be in the, uh, selectmen's meeting room.
Mm-hmm. The new selectmen.
Yes.
In, in a secure case.
In a secure case, yes.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Um, any further discussion under Boston Post cane? I just wanted to, uh, thank you to the historical... I did not actually, I was so unfamiliar with this, I literally, when Mallory sent it to me, I thought, I looked at the name, and I saw Boston, I said, "What is this? We, we're manufacturing cains," and then I looked it up.
It's a generation.
Yeah.
No, it's not, I knew about it.
You totally knew about it. I think it's really cool, though.
Well, I'm, I'm...
Like, now that I know about it, I'm like, "That's a cool tradition." So, I, I would like us, um, to revamp that, I don't know, but we're gonna get it going again. And I'm glad we didn't lose our Boston cane.
And I believe the Highway Department of Libya is at the prime time, but the Highway Department may already be in possession of the cane.
Nice.
We do have it.
Oh, so we don't have to wrangle it from anyone, that's good. Um, okay, so we have a motion and a second to, uh, adopt the recommendations of the Historical Commission regarding the Boston Post cane, any further discussion?
Well, actually, my motion was to, we have a board, I'm sorry. My motion was to...
Just the case?
Build the case and display it.
Okay. Okay, so we'll do another motion.
Yeah.
Um, regarding the case, any further discussion? Thank you, Selectman Pacheco. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes. And regarding the recommendations, you had raised, I can't, can't find it for some reason.
Criteria, the criteria was the point she raised.
The commission shall define the criteria, and all I said was, it's really defined by the, uh, originator, the Boston, formerly Boston Post. You realize that was a newspaper?
That totally said yes.
Okay.
I, I wouldn't say I knew, but it sounds like a newspaper.
So it's like every town in New England received it, right? It was, um, so the fact that it's still kicking around and stuff...
That's pretty cool.
Do we actually know, have we had a presentation in town, and do we know who the oldest person is?
This is their job to find out.
Yes, we need them to do the due diligence, yes.
So, now we don't have the nursing home in town anymore, but it may also be another, I'm not sure who it is. Was, is it Mrs. Ribello, is it, is that the name that you, you mentioned?
Mary Ribello, I think, she was not the oldest. I don't think she got the cane, she was, it seems to me she was close.
Yeah.
And I don't know if she passed before it was actually awarded, 'cause she did have a hundredth birthday, I remember that. But that's the last one I remember, even a mention of a celebration of a hundredth birthday.
No, there was, um, Maria?
Oh, I know you...
Oh, my God, I am so sorry. It's been a really long last name, but she was several thousand.
Oh, yes.
Maria Conchell, um...
Conchell.
We wrote her proclamation.
Yes, yes. Her last name was...
But the cane was at the water. We recognized her birthday, as I remember.
Oh, but she was like a hundredth.
Right, but she wasn't the oldest necessarily.
What I, what I'm saying is, we need to find out who's the oldest resident, and...
And that's what this is...
Yeah, they're gonna...
Yeah, they're gonna do...
And then they come to the selectmen and say, "We've found it."
And they tell us the way it's tracked.
Yeah, so let's be taken, and then we have our...
And it, and it gets tracked, so that when somebody passes, the next person gets recognized.
We come knocking for the cane.
So, the lapel pins, we found lapel pins, we had little mini replica cains. Is that what they're gonna go with?
That's what they were talking about, so it'd be a meeting.
Yeah, they are fabulous, and they are normally worth a guess.
And you don't ask for a back, obviously, so...
No, that's...
So, let's give it to her.
You don't get the cane, but you get a little bit.
And you get to keep it. Yeah, I feel like that's a fair, fair enough trade-off there.
So they're customizing, they're, they're all...
So what do we wanna do regarding the recommendations? I'm okay with it as is, I understand Selectman Gouat's point, so what do we wanna do?
I'm okay, but I'll make a motion that we, we thought the recommendations of the Historical Commission, the presentation of a Boston Post cane, and all, uh...
Um, not done, approved?
Approved.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, all the conditions and requirements that they have submitted to us.
And, and I will second it, and just request that they, um, as closely as possible, follow the criteria of the Boston Post.
Mm-hmm.
And it may have changed over the years, or whoever's in charge, 'cause the Post has it in the business for years.
Yes, uh, it may not have changed, but it...
Okay, I'm fine with that. Uh, any further discussion on the recommendations? Hearing none? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? The ayes have it. And that motion passes as well. And last, under, uh, new business, is discuss establishment of a municipal buildings, uh, study committee and mission. Did you want to-
Sure. On July 30th, we had a meeting, as you all know, at the library board of, the board of library trustees. And what was born out of that conversation was, uh, heavy inclination towards capital planning for facilities in general and the entire town, and not just the library's facilities, but all of them. So I had made a recommendation at that meeting, requesting that you put together a municipal buildings committee that would essentially analyze all of the questions that we have right now for all of the buildings. We're constant, we're currently talking about potentially renovating the fire station or-
You mean all the buildings on the five year plan?
Say they don't get it.
You mean the buildings, yeah.
So all of them.
You said all, so people that don't watch all the time might be like, what are we doing?
Exactly. Yeah, so it's just planning. I'm, I'm a college student, so I don't know what cameras are looking at, but it's just planning at this point. And so we wanted a group of dedicated individuals that would be on that committee to advise the board and then town meeting if it got that far. These are the options we've explored. This is what we think the best plan of action is. And then we would design whether or not to date that best course of action or not. Uh, but a dedicated group of people to really plan the needs of our buildings in a bigger picture as they relate to costs of everybody, because we're not going to go out and borrow, you know, thirteen trillion dollars and call it a day. We're, we're not doing that, obviously. So, as we planned out.
So they'll be discussing the projects that we've talked about in the five year plan, but also how to pay for them and what's how to save for them?
Yep.
Or rent, you know, yeah, all the, yeah.
Look at also-
All the options.
Um, there's now a net zero building code that's going to be coming out and I'm paying attention to that because I think we could get a, a building in that kind of vein and there's no-
Perfect, like in that zero.
Uh, and there would be no utility costs there, it'd be solar. Um, so there's different, you know, you want to watch for these different opportunities. Obviously with the school ones, there's the MSBA. The MSBA fund is funded through sales tax, which obviously took a hit during this whole time. So that's concerning, um, considering the top ten projects on their list are well over three billion dollars.
But that's the, we, we have no control for that.
Well, I mentioned it because it had come up.
It's got to come into the discussion now.
It will, but, but that committee, like we formed, the one Jesse Decker just, we formed that a year ago. I'm not even sure they've made one ever.
But when this came up, I think it was a department head meeting, what they had said was, you've got to consider them. We wouldn't be making the decision, but when you, when you make the list and you also got to include, uh, Aggie School's already been approved, we're going to be getting assessed capital costs. So it's not a matter of taking, uh, whether or not it's going to happen. But in the overall spending plan or total cost, and the other one is Bristol Plymouth, because they have an active project that hasn't been approved yet, but they're going to a school building also. And so while we look at our town needs, there are financial needs that this town is involved in that are well beyond the boundaries of the town. And we're talking multi-million dollar projects. I mean, the Aggie School is over a hundred and ten. Yes, fifty percent roughly reimbursement, but that, that leaves roughly fifty million. And we don't know what BP will come in, but they're going to replace a whole roof.
Well, that's why we need one committee. They will eventually, I would assume, w- once they study it and give us a recommend, say, this is what we think the town needs to do for this building. Then a new committee is formed. We've talked about this before. And then it's the blah blah study committee for whatever specific fire station, let's say. Fire station building study committee. And then it gets specific, but for now, I, what I was just envisioning was just options. Like, we're going to gather the options. We're going to study, like, the current infrastructure. Why isn't it sufficient? Why do, why are we even talking about a new facility? Oh, because of X, Y, and Z. So we'll probably need X, Y, and Z and, and I'm getting a little ahead of myself. But I think that's kind of what I pictured, like, it's just the initial step that's going to born-
Right.
Birth, born, birth, like, you know, other committees that will be separate and distinct. Yes, it's late. Um, specific committees for whatever the specific project is.
So you can also prioritize.
They, they will, exactly. They will come up with a list. They will come up with a list. And then it will be ranked with which ones are we going to take to town, uh, meeting first. But going into town meeting, somebody's going to say, well, aren't we paying a bond issue on this and don't we have a bond coming on that? So we can say, I don't mean we, but the committee can say, we've taken all of those expenses, projected expenses into consideration. And based on the debt we have and the debt we expect to have if a bond issue hasn't yet been sold, uh, we're obligated to pay it. This is the project that we have ranked number one, and these are the reasons why. But we have looked at all of the mortgages faced, mortgage payments we're going to have, okay? And this is what the recommendation is, because if you don't do that, that town meeting people will get up and use those things to shoot you down.
And it's not realistic. It, it's just not realistic. I just request, I would actually like a seat, uh, on that committee if that's at all possible.
Do we need to, so, um, how do we do this? So this should actually be good for the human rights committee. So we for, we establish the committee. There's a vote to establish a committee. Then is the members and then the mission, right? Okay, let's do it that way if we're going down this road. So I will entertain motions.
I'll make a motion that we establish a municipal buildings study committee.
Check it.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? The ayes have it. And that motion passes. And now I'll entertain a motion, uh, regarding how many members we'd like to have.
Did you have any idea this?
I'm in between item seven. How I envision this, there's myself, um, Mr. Aggie R., as facilities management, and I don't know, one other town, a point nine percent, and then at large.
To be on this as well.
Dennis, maybe?
Yeah, I'm hoping.
And then at large, uh, committee members.
Oh, is one of someone from the planning committee should be on it?
Oh, good idea. No, it's going to be Mr. Rendon.
Yeah, we'll ask him. That's a good point, because he's also capital. That's why we should have it be Mr. Rendon, because he's also capital outlet committee. So he really, more than, and he was the only one doing that for a long time, so he really knows.
Trying to get him help, as soon as the AGU is okay with our bylaw.
He's hung in there. I'm sure he'll hang in there.
He'd help me right now, so.
Yeah. So what do we think about that?
I'll make a motion that we, um, have seven members on the municipal buildings study committee. Uh, and the makeup of those members will be determined by the board. I think we ought to talk to Mr. Rendon first, all right? And maybe Mr. Schwartz, but I think a seven member committee is a good place to start.
So if we, um, okay, so building commissioner, town administrator, capital outlet slash finance. So there's four other spaces, right? Okay, are we okay with that? And hopefully one of them is Mr. McGee and it's really actually free. Okay.
I think it might be difficult to get seven, but if you're going to try for seven, it's not going to, go down to five.
It's also good, because you have all of these buildings, the committee can break up into subgroups.
Yes, yes.
Which is helpful for sharing the workload.
I think we, about this.
I think it would be good. And I, I don't want to exclude people, because we have trouble getting people to serve. I'm hesitant to have any department head who is on our lists serve, because they're going to be pushing their own project. And we're looking for a, I think, an independent committee that's going to look at all the needs and weigh all the information and make a recommendation based on best information possible. So that we don't have anybody saying, I want to be on it because I want my building, my project done.
I, I would agree with that. The only, the, yes, I would agree with that if one of those people was going to be on the committee, but the list we have is just the building commissioner, town administrator, and Robert Rendon. And they don't, the building commissioner's working on the bottom of town hall, so he doesn't have like a, am I wrong? He doesn't have like a, like the highway garage or the police station.
Yeah, my point, I, those are all fine. What I'm saying is, we talked about, um, fire department, highway department, library.
Like not one of them.
Oh, okay, yeah, totally, I agree, totally.
Right?
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Okay.
So do we have a motion?
So I made a motion for the seven members committee and a seconded.
We were just talking.
And we haven't named everybody yet, but we get potentials.
Yep. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it and that motion passes. Uh, what, am I missing anything?
The mission?
The mission.
Mission. Um, Madam Administrator, can you?
Uh, the committee shall be charged with, uh, planning the renovation.
No, I would say-
No, no, determine the-
Maybe studying.
Determine the needs.
The needs or, yeah.
Determine the needs and prioritize a list.
Of potential capital funding.
Of projects for, uh, potential capital funding.
And exploring viable opportunities for each?
Funding, viable funding opportunities.
That's all going to be under this zing about it.
I just bring that up because our discussion about the library, and I'm sorry to cut you off.
Funding matters in terms of the priority.
The discussion about the library went into, is it good to lease? Is it good to build new? Is it good to renovate? Like, I want the committee to kind of weigh all of that for every building.
Mm-hmm. Options. We want not just funding opportunities, but also just-
Workable options.
Infrastructure options, like, could we, um, can we renovate or can we stand or do we have to build new? Just like those questions should be explored too. It shouldn't just be, uh, we think we need a new fire station and then that's the only thing that we're going to look at. We want to do a fact-based study.
So determine the needs, uh, establish priorities relative to new or renovation, new construction or and/or renovation and potential funding sources.
And expansion.
For capital projects.
Sure.
That works.
I think it's broad enough, but it, but it's kind of covers all the things.
I second that motion. That was a motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? The ayes have it and that motion passes. Could work on that. Uh, next, and, and we can be brief. I just put this on here. Um, the DR class of twenty twenty graduation, it was hot, but it was nice. It was hot. Um, luckily that we were in like the shade. It was like a shady sign.
It was super glowy.
All the parents were in the sun.
And I were at the Bristol, that was hot. That, we were in the sun the whole time. I didn't have a hat and put some like on. But for the, uh, DR, we were fortunate, the sun was kind of running back. We were in the bleachers. And it wasn't bad for us. It was, it was bad for the students as well as their families, but, uh, it was good. It was a nice ceremony.
It was nice.
It was, you know, people wearing their masks and social distancing. It was, the speakers were, were brief, I thought. I mean, given it was, it was not anything else. There was a lot of graduates, but, uh, it was nice to, to discuss. And, oh, Mrs. Gouat was there last year, if I'm correct. She was on the other side. So, uh, it's always nice to attend.
It is. I, I put this on there simply because what I, I guess, we think about, when I was thinking about high school and like how, how a high school student might be affected by COVID nineteen, as an adult, I think I was looking at it like, oh, they missed prom and they missed, their kids, they're like-
You were the high school kid again.
Yeah. And then it was weird, because when I was there and you get to hear the speeches, almost every student touched upon how they were affected. And no one was, no one was like saying, oh, poor me. They, they were speeches about perseverance and the importance of being perseverant in the face of obstacles. But I realized, like, I felt like I put my, hearing it live, I was able to understand how that might, you know, they went to school for four years and I actually was a dork, so I liked school, but some kids just go to school because they have to go to school and so they look forward to the prom and the, the senior beach day. I didn't even know what that, I don't think I was invited to my senior beach day. It was uncool.
That's a hooky day.
But, yeah, see, I would, I would never have been there.
Was that the beach also? Was it a penny?
I never heard of that.
Uh, they would have different names, but it was, you play hooky. And, and there would be, I, even when I worked at the, the high school, the word was out. All the seniors aren't showing up, because other kids would say, oh, well, my boyfriend's a senior, so I'm not going to be here. And the word would get out, if you are not in school and you are not ill, you're truing and you're going to be punished. And if you're out ill, we want to, like, God just knows. I mean, kids still did it, but yeah, it was still the day to play hooky.
We were able to, like, you wouldn't walk at graduation, so we couldn't have a senior skip day, senior parade, like-
Yeah, whatever they called it.
Seep trap does not, you can't walk.
The, the Aggie kids had similar themes in their speeches too. It wasn't so much about, they didn't mention things that didn't happen, but they also talked about how they, uh, persevere, you know? And here we are today. We finally have an eye graduation.
I know. It was, um, it was, it was nice to see and it was nice, like, it was almost like a reality check, like, okay.
Doctor C, I just wanted to ask you if you had anything. You had sent an email and, um, and if you don't, that's fine. Community garden. Did you want to say anything about that?
Oh, sure, yeah, I can. Uh, let me just get my email that I sent you guys, which was really based on the post. There will be one second. Yeah, that's a good point, actually. Okay, so what has happened was, um, it's a project, right? So COVID happened and then we couldn't just get out there and just start working, because we were all confined to our homes. Yeah, well, now we can't water anything. And so this led me to reach out to the kind of group that had expressed interest. We have an email, like an email contact list, and I just said, like, very honest, like, I don't think I have the time where I can be the person that's leading the project. I can come and water the plants or pick, you know, I can do that kind of stuff, um, but not be the one coordinating everything. And so someone stepped up and it happened to be someone who, um, actually, we went to their Eagle, uh, we went to their Eagle Scout ceremony, the Patricios, and, um, they are still involved in the Boy Scouts. And so she stepped up and wanted the Boy Scouts to be involved, which prompted me to reach out to Girl Scouts, because they do a lot of service projects, like at the, um, library, thought they might want to be involved. And so of course they were. And then all these different troops were reaching out. And so now we have a million volunteers and a million little hands. And there will be an onsite meeting. Um, we don't have a date yet, so I'll let everyone know. We do want the town administrator, she can be there, just because we're going to start the conversation of, uh, how many beds we want? How big are the garden beds going to be? What kind of, um, plants do you want to grow? And just, um, those conversations are going to start getting into the real nitty gritty of it.
This is the next year.
Uh, they want, they, they're ambitious. Like, I feel like this group thinks that they are going to have something in terms of produce before the end of the year.
Yeah, I don't know about that, but they can build the beds now, so that they're ready, they're ready for next year. And they, it's not that many crops you can plant now.
Yeah, because winter, it's, the cold weather's coming.
I mean, they planted some carrots a couple of weeks ago, so internals, I might get them before we get, uh, the trees.
But not only that, what we found out with the land down at, uh, Tomsolo too, you have to let it rest. So if they build the beds this year, the land has been fallow all these years, but it'll, it'll be fallow over the winter. And so, uh, you know, they might even throw some rye in the ground, which would be beneficial, but, you know, I was just wondering, because I-
No, no, and I appreciate it. I wasn't even, it's late, so I like, I wasn't even thinking about it. But, um, we are, we know, I know people in town that, um, do garden beds and things like that, so I have an idea of how expensive they'll be. So we're going to have that meeting and we will, uh, I will report back to everybody on that.
I just want to mention, if anyone says anything about the water ban indictment, I did a double take today on one thirty eight. The greenest grass in Dayton, I believe, is not at Segi. It's the last house, if you're going south, it's the last house before the Somerset line. And I thought, I mean, the water is going and the lawn is beautiful and I'm thinking, hey, I'm going to don't on you, that's Somerset water. So they're not doing anything illegal, but they've got beautiful green grass.
Beautiful envy. We're all agreeing with envy, right? But you can't, you can't water it if you have a vegetable die, you can't water it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's a good point. I, I saw my mom watering the other day and I almost, I said, what are you doing? You're going to come and shut us off. She assured we were okay. Um, do we have anything under correspondence? Actually, I do just want to mention, I'm not going to read it. Um, Mrs. Powell reached out to us regarding, um, how appreciative she was about, um, our Board of Health, Board of- about, um, our Board of Health, Board of, everyone working with the school district to make sure that the graduation ceremony happened. Um, and I think she might have mentioned Mr. Pillings specifically, so I just wanted to, um, point that out, that people are appreciative, and our team is doing a good job, so, and people are noticing, so, very, keep up the good work, everybody. Uh, no acknowledgements, under minutes, do we want to do the approval of the minutes and list the dates? And then we can do the except for review separate, how do we want to do that? You might have a question for that.
I do have, I do have. Have there been any changes in, uh, these four minutes of a two?
If I read at least, yes. I read so many minutes.
So we can do them all together, right?
Yep, and then we'll do the except for.
Right, so I want to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the Board of Select's special meeting of June 15, 2020, the pandemic task force meeting of June 17 of 2020, and the regular meeting of June 24th, and the June, July 18 meeting of the Board of Select.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes.
I'll make a motion that accept for review the minutes of the Board of Select's regular meeting of July 22nd.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes. Uh, next is approval of the warrants, Selectman Gulat?
Mr. Chairman, I hope that the following warrants dated July 28, 2020 be approved. 5A dash 21, the amount of ninety-three thousand, nine hundred eighty-five dollars, twenty cents payroll. 5B dash 21, the amount of sixteen thousand, four hundred sixteen dollars, ninety-eight cents payroll. And 5C dash 21, in the amount of three hundred forty-two thousand, one hundred twelve dollars, fifty-seven cents. Accounts payable be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I hope that the following warrants dated August 5, 2020 be approved. Number 6A dash 21, the amount of a hundred and ten thousand, six hundred seventy-eight dollars, forty-six cents payroll. 6B dash 21, the amount of four hundred seventy-seven thousand, four hundred fourteen dollars, thirty cents. And 6C dash 21, the amount of a hundred and three dollars and thirty-three cents. The last two being accounts payable be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I hope that the warrant stated August 12, 2020 be approved. 7A dash 21, the amount of a hundred four thousand, four hundred twenty-six dollars, fifty-two cents payroll. 7B dash 21, the amount of one hundred seventy-nine dollars, three hundred sixteen dollars, sixty-seven cents. And 7C dash 21, the amount of seventy-eight thousand, two hundred twelve dollars, fifty cents. The last two being accounts payable be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and that motion passes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, just a question, I think, it may be on the next, uh, group of warrants, we will be making our first payment to the Regional District under the 112 budget.
Right.
Um.
Are you, are you allowing us to be braced for the, the impact of the number?
We know it's going to be resilient, because I'll tell you all, hold on, all right? It's always a separate warrant. Um, but when I saw that, I remembered, when the tax, when the taxes are due, we usually have a quad, a quadway meeting with Rehoboth. And I'm just wondering, uh, if we should be contacting them, or whatever.
Yep, it has been a while, it's the pandemic, though, I feel like, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and, uh, we may, we may delay it, but, uh, certainly.
Zoom.
Certainly, yeah, but was, the last one was in Rehoboth, wasn't it? Like, they, oh, no, they came to Dayton.
No, well, I remember going there.
No, we went there, I agree.
And it was about the two-town meeting in the.
I couldn't make that reading, you're right, she's right.
And I don't think there was another, um, meeting after that, because why would there be when it would be, when it was coming up, COVID-19 happened?
That's right, the taxes would have been paid after November, kind of very much.
But it wasn't, it was prior to all of the two-town meetings. We had a bunch of meetings, and then you were meeting with, um, Chairman Swal as well.
Yes, we had that, we had a meeting, and they were, we were, we were picking the, um, town moderator.
And I couldn't make it, that's exactly.
And we were getting ready for that whole thing, and then it didn't happen. And then, and then, I mean, we were waiting for the department bed, and then it was settled, what it was going to be, and then the virus came. And, but, I just thought of it because I know we're going to be making that payment, and we usually do it whatever the month the taxes are due, so, uh, we probably should answer.
I'm not so eager to meet with them, and they, they postponed their, their, their annual term meeting again, right? It's maybe October or September, October, so I'm not sure, I want to listen to what they're, what they're saying.
But they may say, you know, we don't think we should be, all I'm saying is, I think we should say, are we going to have a meeting? Is it going to happen? I don't know. You know, not only that, um, if the, if the budget situation is still the way it is, I mean, if, I don't know that they've set a date or anything, so, um, I don't want to get into another, I don't want a continuation of the meeting we had, when we were trying to figure out who the moderator was going to be and all of that stuff and all that bad stuff. If we're going to have a meeting, I hope we're going to talk about subjects other than the schools.
I do too.
Let me just put it that way, so we can reach out.
Can we make that the caveat, say, we want to reach out, we just want.
No.
We're not reaching out specifically for the schools, we, we have mutual interests.
Right.
That's why we started the meetings again, and that's fine.
I would, I would love to have a discussion, and we would have more info and probably know where that amendment is. They've got solifiles, and they will probably have more. And if it's still in the process of trying to get people, whatever, I just want people out there to know what the significance of this is.
Okay, so we'll reach out to them, and, poor Andrew is just like, I can't, yes. Um, so, great, we'll reach out to them, and we'll ask them. Uh, any further public input? Who is still on the line? Is there someone on the line? Okay.
I'm going to await a soon.
Yeah, please take me with you. Um, okay, I will enter, uh, motions to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Number 3, uh, to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair sort of declares, I do. Clerical union contract negotiations update. And, uh, number 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate. If the chair sort of declares, I do, then an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Discussion of Main Street parcels, Astroseneca Land.
You, so moved.
Second. You guys, I feel like I try, I'm trying to share the. Um, we have a motion and a second, um, any, there's no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion passes, roll call?
Aye.
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 Cable, Andrew, thank you, don't hate me.
Thank you, Cable.
We appreciate you.